Guten Morgen, alle. Oder guten Tag an alle. Entschuldigung für den kurzen Anlass. Technologien. Vielen Willkommen zu der vierten Edition von Extended Realities, dem XR-Programm des Regen International Film Festival. Heute haben wir eine spannende Sitzung von sechs Case-Studien, in denen Profis aus Lateinien und überall in Europa ihre Erfahrungen mit der Entwicklung, Produktion und Verbreitung ihrer XR-Artwork teilen. Danach wird ein Panel darüber geführt, obwohl es finanzielle Möglichkeiten gibt und andere Tipps für die Verbreitung XR-Artswork. Dieses Event wäre nicht möglich ohne den unterstützenden Unterstützern unserer Partner. Regen Extended Realities ist von der National Film Center of Latvia, der britischen Embassaden in Lateinien und dem Fränzischen Institut in Regen unterstützt. Bevor ich weitergehe, möchte ich unsere Moderatorin Eva Brasjonite präsentieren, die uns für die erste Mal wiederbegeht. Eva, bitte, das Plenum ist alles deine.
Danke, liebe, danke. Es ist sehr schön, hier im Studio in Regen zu sein. Ich komme selbst aus Luthenia, wo ich viele Filmfestival gearbeitet habe, National Film Fund, und in den letzten drei Jahren arbeite ich mit einem Immersive Content Production Studio. Ich habe mich selbst selbst im Produktion von VR-XR-Projekten erlebt. Ich bin sehr stolz auf heute's Programm. Christine, ich habe dich erwähnt. Wir haben fantastische Redner, die ihre Kenntnisse teilen, ihre Erfahrungen, wie sie es gemacht haben und wie erfolgreich und hart das war. Ich bin sehr gespannt auf das Programm und hoffe, dass es dir auch sehr profitiert und motiviert. Wenn du einige Ideen hast, kannst du darüber nachdenken, wie man es implementiert und wie man es auf irgendeine Schranke bringt, weil alles möglich ist. Das ist das, was dieses Event ist. Ja, wir haben sechs Präsentationen, fünf Case-Studien. Dieses Stream läuft auf Facebook und YouTube Kanal. Auf Facebook kannst du Fragen beantworten, wenn du siehst. Mit dem Team werden wir versuchen, sie zu beantworten. Wenn diejenigen, die denken, dass diese Information für ihre Freunde nützlich sein könnte, wissen, dass dieses Stream im YouTube-Kanal des Festivals Regen International Film Festival bleibt. Du kannst es immer wieder sehen oder mit deinen Freunden später darüber teilen. Und dann haben wir eine kurze Pause nach diesen Präsentationen. Nach dieser kurzen Pause werden wir ein Panel mit drei beeindruckenden Frauen aus der Industrie führen, die wieder darüber diskutieren, wie man XR-Artwork produziert, wie man sie verbreitet. Voilà. Gut, dass du heute gehst. Ich hoffe, du bist gespannt, du hast deinen Kaffee bereits. Ich möchte dir unsere erste Redner präsentieren, die aus Dänemark kommt und mit uns online ist. Das ist Rebecca Pulle. Sie wird ihre Projekt „Hush“, „The Human Frequency“ präsentieren. Ich möchte dir kurz über sie präsentieren. Sie ist Filmleiter und Schriftsteller. Sie hat Dokumente, Kunst und Kurzfilme geschrieben, mit dem Unterstützung des National Film Fund aus Dänemark, Danish Television und Al Jazeera. Ihre Filme haben im Berlinale, Hot Dogs, Copenhagen Dogs und viele andere international Film festivals gewonnen. Seine erste hybride Dokumente „Hybrid Documentary and Elsewhere“ hat sich dieses Jahr an Copenhagen Dogs prämiert. Seine erste VR-Artwork „Hush“, über die wir heute sprechen, hat sich im Venice Film Festival letztes Jahr prämiert. Von Filmemacher bis zu Immersive VR, wie die Lust auf Sensibilität und physische Einflussnahme sie von dem linearen „Elsewhere“ Hybride Dokumente auf vertikale Immersive Storytelling genommen hat. Welche einzigartigen Aspekte von Immersive Storytelling sind es, die es möglich machen, als Werkzeug zu nutzen, um mit Natur und Mythos zu verbinden? Es klingt ein bisschen mystisch, aber das ist der Grund, warum wir Rebecca mit uns haben. Hallo, guten Morgen. Sie wird...
Sorry. Guten Morgen.
Hi.
Hi.
Wir teilen die Schranke und die Schranke ist deine. Bitte, ich präsentiere es dir kurz, also beginne, wo du es möchtest.
Ja, ja. Guten Morgen, everybody. Oder guten Abend. Ich bin nicht sicher, wo du bist, genau wann, welche Zeitzone, wo die verschiedenen Orte sind. Aber ja. Ich bin Filmemacher, fundamental. Ich bin kein Immersive VR Storyteller. Für mich war „Hush“ das erste VR-Projekt, das ich gemacht habe. Und eigentlich war... Der Grund, warum ich entschieden habe, dass es interessant sein könnte, so zu gehen, war, dass, wie es gesagt wurde, ich arbeitete auf einem Dokument filmen, der „Elsewhere“ heißt. Es ist ein Hybrid. Also ist es teilweise Fiktion, teilweise Dokumente. Und „Elsewhere“ ist über die invisible Aspekte der menschlichen Leben und Storytelling. Also ist es über Mythologie, Religion. Und sehr viel Mythologie ist mit Natur verbunden. Also Tiere der Natur, Meere, Menschen, Elbe und Dinge wie das. Und „Elsewhere“ wurde in der Nordostdeutschland geschaut, in einer bestimmten Region Deutschlands, wo Natur viel härter ist als im Rest des Landes. Deutschland ist sehr flach, sehr untraurig naturwichtig, aber in dieser bestimmten Region Deutschlands, nahe dem Westen des Meer, haben Menschen durch Generationen sehr hängend auf den Meer als Quelle von Einkommen, als Lebensmittel. Und es ist viel mehr windiger, es ist härter, es gibt Bereiche, die ein bisschen wie Erdgeschirr sind. Und in dieser bestimmten Region Deutschlands ist die Christentum immer noch stark. Beides, Christentum, aber auch andere Arten von Glaubenssinn, oder du kannst es als Superstition nennen. Ich habe nie wirklich die Worte „Superstition“ gefällt, weil es klingt, als wäre es ein anderer Grad Glaubenssinn oder Glaubenssinn. Und in meiner Auffassung ist alles, was wir glauben, erleben, wahr. Ein oder andere Art, es ist Teil der Realität, ob es etwas ist, was wir sehen können oder nicht, oder ob es etwas ist, was jeder glaubt oder nur einige Menschen glauben. Aber es ist Teil unseres Weltkommens. Also war ich interessiert in dieser Verbindung zwischen Glaubenssinn und Natur, und der Zusammenhang zwischen Menschen und Natur. Und dass irgendwie scheint, als wäre es, wenn du in einer Region bist, wo Natur viel mehr vorhanden ist, wo du an der Ehre der Natur viel mehr bist als wenn du in einer Stadt lebst, dass es vielleicht auch eine Tendenz zu stärkeren Glaubenssystemen gibt, weil es dieser Art von Humor gibt, wenn es um dein Verhältnis zu Natur geht. Was es es irgendwie einfacher macht, zu glauben, dass es etwas anderes da ist, etwas größer und stärker als wir, als Menschen, unsere Rationale, unsere Gedanken, unsere Willen. Weil du in einem Weltkommens lebst, wo wir nicht so... Du lebst in einer Realität, wo Natur trotzdem noch stärker ist als du. Also das ist alles, was mich dazu geführt hat, dieses Teil Deutschlands zu untersuchen. Und was ich gefunden habe, war, dass niemand mehr in Natur, Tieren glaubt. Aber es gibt immer noch kleine Reste dieser alten Glaubenssinn. Und es gibt viele Ghosts in dieser Region, sowie ein starkes Gefühl von Christentum. Also fing ich an, in diese verschiedenen Mythos einzudringen. Und eines der Mythos, mit dem ich mich beschäftigte, ist der, der die Fundament für „Hush“ wurde. Und das ist der Mythos über den jungen Mann, der durch diese Show walks und hört den Befehl vom Meere. Und das macht ihm letztendlich die Leben auf dem Boden unter den Menschen abgeben. Und er ist von diesem anderen Weltkommens genommen. Und ich werde dir jetzt einen Clip zeigen aus dem Film, der sich cinematisch mit diesem Mythos beschäftigt. Und dann werde ich mit dir darüber sprechen, wie ich versuchte, durch die Sensen zu kommunizieren und nicht so viel durch Rationale. Und versuchte, die Geschichte in einer Art zu erzählen, die den Publikum nicht darüber macht, ob das wahr ist oder nicht, ob das Sinn ergibt oder nicht, sondern eher es einfach mit den Sensen zu fühlen. Ja, du kannst jetzt den ersten Clip zeigen.
.....................................................................
.................. Amen.
Yes, Angela, und bevor du die Videos kommentierst, würde du gerne teilen, wie du begonnen hast, darüber zu denken. Wusste du von Anfang an, dass es ein XR-Projekt wird? Und du wirst es für VR Headsets produzieren? Oder wie hast du das geklärt?
No, no. Ja, nein, ich war nur... Also es begann alles mit dem, dass ich auf das Film arbeitete. Und dann, weil es so wichtig für mich war, hauptsächlich durch die Sensen zu kommunizieren, durch die taktile physische Erfahrung des Films zu schauen, hatte ich eine Gespräche mit jemandem aus dem Danish Film Institute, der mir tatsächlich sagte: „Wenn du komplett mit der taktischen physischen Erfahrung willst, dann könnte es für eine Teile deines Films, des Weltkommens, die das Film repräsentiert, wert sein.“ Und dann habe ich diesen speziellen Mythos aus dem Film gewählt und entschieden, ich werde in dieses zu gehen. Dann werde ich... Denn es ist sogar im Namen, als Publikum eines Films ist, bist du ein Erklärender. Du schaust was vor dir. Du machst keine Entscheidungen selbst. Du bist nicht beteiligt in der Narrativ. Deine Position im Cinemag ist nicht, dass es was auf der Schranke passiert. Und weil ich wollte, dass die Leute auf verschiedene Frequenzen hineingehen, ich möchte, dass sie ein Raum öffnen, in denen die Möglichkeit besteht, dieses Anderen in der Natur zu fühlen, dass es allofmitten irgendwie wahrscheinlich fühlt, dass es vielleicht etwas da ist, um sich selbst dieses Gefühl von einem Anderen zu erleben, etwas, eine lebende Wesen mit einer Art Intention. Um die Leute selbst zu erleben in ihrem eigenen Körper, wollte ich, dass sie nicht in diesem komfortablen Erkländer sind. Denn das ist ein Ort der Entscheidung, der Inhalt oder nicht. Aber beim Immersive Filmemachen bist du, wie es auch in der Wörter steht, ein User, nicht ein Publikum. Also bist du irgendwie ein Teilnehmer. Und ich wollte, dass die Publikum nicht mehr eine Publikum ist, sondern dass sie ein Teilnehmer ist und irgendwie ein Erlebnis in der Geschichte ist. Und so habe ich entschieden, den Subjekt zu nutzen. Um den Subjekt der Mythologie zu nutzen. Dass du, anstatt eine Geschichte zu hören, über einen jungen Mann, der zum See ging, du selbst in dieser Position gelegt bist. Du bist der, der am See ist. Du bist der, der langsam erlebt, wie die Geräusche des Meer langsam verändern. Und es beginnt zu fühlen wie eine Musik oder eine Stimme, die dich rufen. So habe ich entschieden, das zu versuchen und diese Geschichte in VR zu erzählen. Ja. Aber dann hatte ich natürlich keine Erfahrung. Ich hatte keine vorherige Erfahrung mit dem VR. Also musste ich viel lernen, um herauszufinden, wie man es dann behandeln kann. Ich wusste, dass es bestimmte Elemente gab, die ich auch in dem Film benutzt habe, die ich in VR benutzen wollte. Und das ist die Spiel mit deinen Sensen. Also wollte ich mit Soundhalluzination arbeiten. Ich wollte mit realen Geräuschen arbeiten, die langsam ein wenig gestört wurden. Ich wollte mit einer Realität arbeiten, die erscheint wahr, aber ist etwas... Aber etwas langsam gestört. Und dann... Also wollte ich ein strange, aber realistisches Weltkommens kreieren. Und das erste, was wir gemacht haben, wenn wir testeten, wie wir... Wie wir unser Weltkommens kreieren und wie es aussehen würde, waren wir mit echten Bildern versucht. Aber das gab uns viele verschiedene Probleme, weil ich bin sicher, dass es jetzt verbessert ist, aber in dem Zeitpunkt sah echte Bildung nicht großartig aus. Also haben wir komplett CGI mit allem entschieden. Aber unser Ausgang war ein realistisches Weltkommens, aber ein Weltkommens, der etwas gestört ist. Also, wenn wir den Finanzprozess starteten, haben wir ein kleines Pilot gemacht. Und ich konnte von Anfang an sehen, weil ich so viel Tactilität wollte. Ich wollte... Ich wollte es nicht so aussehen wie ein Computerwelt. Ich wollte nicht diese Reinheit, die du oft in einem computergenerierten Weltgesehen hast. Ich wollte Darm. Ich wollte das Gefühl von Darm im Luft. Ich wollte all diese verschiedenen Dinge. Und ich fand heraus, dass das die Software sehr viel pushen. Wenn du VR machst. Und so haben wir eine der Dinge gemeinsam gemacht, war die Haltbarkeit. Es ist sehr dunkel. Und im Ausgang war es sogar dunkler als es damals war. Und jetzt zeige ich dir den ersten kleinen Test, den wir hatten, den wir verwendet haben, wenn wir umgehen wollten, im Pitching. Ein sehr harter Test des Unterwasserweltkommens. Jetzt ist es eigentlich, wenn du den ersten Clip zeigst. Danke. Okay. Okay, so war es, wie es von Anfang an aussah. Und wie du sehen kannst, haben wir noch nicht wirklich herausgefunden, genau wie es aussehen sollte oder wie man genau die Geräusche benutzt. Denn hier hast du tatsächlich noch eine echte Frau's Stimme sprechen. Und du hast... Ja, und du hast all diese Wasser-Elemente und Dinge. Es ist noch nicht... Es ist sehr hart. Und natürlich war eines der Hauptdinge, mit dem wir uns befassen mussten, wenn wir dieses Projekt gemacht haben, war, wie man vom realistischen Weltkommens zum mehr imaginären Unterwasserwelt kommen kann. Wie man vom Strand und in das Wasser kommt. Und von Anfang an hatten wir diese Idee, dass wir den User auf dem Strand setzen würden, dass es Seemann oder andere Sailors seien, um dir dieses Gefühl zu geben, dass du selbst ein Ghost bist. Und vielleicht würdest du mit Boot aus dem Meer gehen und dann in das Wasser fallen. Und all das haben wir schnell festgestellt, das war zu kompliziert. Und so... Ja, und dann hatten wir diese Idee, eigentlich war es meine Produzenten-Idee, dass vielleicht wir es einfach anregen könnten, statt zu regnen, und dann hätte das Weltkommens wegregnen. Und natürlich war das ein großes Entschädigung, weil eines der Dinge, was wirklich falsch in VR gehen kann, ist, wenn du zu viel herumbewegen musst. Wenn du... Es gibt diese Dinge, die die Leute enttäuschen. Und auch, weil wir bisher nie VR gemacht haben, finde ich die Idee, dass du den User in einem Ort setzen kannst, und das ist eigentlich, wo sie bleiben. Und dann verändert sich das Weltkommens um, und es wird ein fallender, vertikaler Fall, wo du gesetzt bist, statt so viel Aktion, die nach dem anderen passiert. Und eine andere Sache, die wichtig ist, ist, dass das eine subjektive Erfahrung ist. Und das ist extrem wichtig, wenn man diese Illusion schafft, dass du dieses einzigartige Treffen mit der Natur hast. Also, was ich bei VR finde, wenn man dieses einzigartige subjektive Erfahrung schafft, ist, dass du jemanden komplett isolieren kannst. Also sind sie nicht von den Gefühlen und Reaktionen von jemand anderem umgebracht. Du... Und sie sind auch in diesem Raum, in dem sie komplett in deiner Realität eingedacht sind. Aber gleichzeitig kannst du dieses kleine Zweifel nutzen, dass es eine Art Interferenz vom externen Weltkommens geben könnte, besonders durch Geräusche. Und so schafft das eine gute Basis für die Spiel mit Halluzinationen. Für die Spiel mit diesem Gefühl von, war das eigentlich etwas, was ich gehört habe? War es Teil des Designs oder war es etwas, was ich erwartet habe? Und das ist, wie wir diese tatsächlichen Erfahrungen in der Natur haben, wenn wir im dunklen Wald alleine standen, dort zu hören. Zu einem Punkt bist du verboten, das Gefühl zu haben, dass es etwas da ist. Was kommt aus meiner eigenen Erwartung und was ist eigentlich hier? Und ich wollte das Gefühl in dem User schaffen. Und in diesem Sinne ist VR quasi ideal, weil du alleine mit deiner Erfahrung bist. Du beeinflusst deine eigene Erfahrung, du bewegst dich herum, du entscheidest, worauf zu fokussieren, du entscheidest, wo du schauen sollst. Also für diese Gründe, Manipulation von echten Geräuschen in kleine Zwitspern, kleine atemlose Geräusche, „Hush“, es ist auch „Hush“ genannt, mit echten Geräuschen des Wassers und Dinge wie das, waren unglaublich wichtig, wenn man diese Illusion schafft, dass du mit einem Anderen in der Natur eine Treffen hast. Also das sind einige der Dinge, mit denen wir arbeiten haben. Und dann natürlich auch visuell ist Haltbarkeit extrem wichtig. Also ein bisschen Haltbarkeit, Dunkelheit, Schatten, all diese Geräusche sind sehr nützlich. Natürlich, wenn man diese Illusion schafft, dass es vielleicht etwas da ist. Und so zeige ich dir jetzt einen Clip. Und es ist eine 2D-Version, natürlich, also ist das ein bisschen schlimm. Aber das ist die einzige Art, es auf einer Flachen Schranke zu zeigen. Natürlich hoffe ich, dass du den echten Teil, wie es sein sollte, sehen kannst. Aber hier ist, wie wir dieses transitionieren haben, von auf dem Strand und zu einem, was in einem, in das Wasser gesetzt wird. Also, wenn du den Clip spielst, nun muss ich ganz sicherstellen, dass es eigentlich der dritte Clip ist. Nummer drei. All right. So that, that feels a bit slow when it's on 2D. But yeah, but we found that that is a good way to get, get from the beach and to the, to the underwater world because, because it uses rain that gradually blurs out your world. And for me at least, that kind of works in that whole direction of not judging, of not becoming too aware of what you think about this. And I think if you went on a boat and you sailed out and you kind of had to go through something that seems a bit like a drowning, this leaves you open to much more interpretation about what it is that actually happens to you. If you are just taken over by the underwater world or if you are somehow yourself a part of going there, if you are drowning, if you are just entering a different type of world. And I'm happy that all of this is a bit open ended. And at the end, I want to say that another thing that is actually important, but not always possible, of course, when watching this piece is that ideally you experience it in an installation. Because it's a very sort of quiet, meditative kind of work. And it's not ideal that you go from a lot of action and then directly into this VR piece. So when we've had it as an installation, we've done it in a way that it prepares you for this kind of calm entrance into another kind of world. So we use elements from the sea, from the world of fishing, where this myth is derived from. And we created sort of transparent walls of projections from the ocean. And what we've done is that we've done recordings from above the sea. And then, and so the beginning of the projection is, is this, is the, is the projection of the sea on a screen. So it looks like a surface, like a transparent surface of water running down. And so, and another thing that I put a lot of importance on with the various installations, when, when the piece is part of an installation, is that you protect the viewer. Because I never really appreciated, when I do VR, that everybody can look at me while I am in a, in a completely sort of, in my own experience. It, I want to protect the user so that they are not vulnerable to outside gazes. So part of the installation is to protect the viewer from gazes from outside. So it's always wall by wall by wall. And then at the very back, the user is there alone so that you can move your arms around, be frightened, cry, whatever happens to you, you don't have to worry about that you are, that you are kind of the object of other people's gaze. So you can show the final clip and that is from the installation at Nikolaj Konstel in Copenhagen.
Any last comments from your side?
No, except that I, I realized that I think I forgot to tell everybody what the actual myth that is the outset of the work is.
But you can do it shortly right now?
Yeah, no, but it's, so it's all about, it's connected to nature and of course, the merpeople in nature. But it is this story, but that is also told in the clip that I showed from the film. It is the story about a young man who goes to sea looking for driftwood. And then gradually he just fades away and everybody knows that he was taken by the merpeople because he was seduced by their song. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Super lovely. So I just want to address the ones who are watching here from Latvia Riga, that Hush is available to see. So all this talk was about, you can come to Riga International Film Festival, to their main venue, Splendid Palace on Elizabetha Street. And from six o'clock today and tomorrow, get this experience yourself. Because it's available together with two other case studies you're gonna hear about today. So thank you Rebecca very much. It was a pleasure listening for you. As let's, let me untitle you, previous typical traditional director experiencing this VR, staying so open. Okay, we can't do that, but what we can do. So I'm happy you had your supportive team, someone who helped you and not have scared you with VR and possibilities and that you haven't been disappointed with that particular possibilities. So it was very interesting to, to hear. We also received some feedback from our listeners that confusing brain is sometimes good. Thank you Eric for staying with us. And yeah, so if there is no more from your side, we thanking you again for joining us this morning. I really hope that our local directors also get the openness you, you share with us regarding XR.
Yeah. Put your avocation, Tim. Yeah.
Lovely, lovely to have you here.
All right. Thank you. Enjoy the festival.
We are. So for the other listeners who are listening for us, you can address your questions on Facebook. If we have time, we address them or we comment back. And yeah, so after this one very film though experience, very meditative experience, we're moving to our next presentation. And we have two lovely speakers joining from UK, which is Angela Colvett and Tom Bowtel, sorry. And their presentation about Join the Dots: Developing Educational Practice Through the Co-Design of Transmedia Stories in Schools. And I want to present shortly you the speakers. So Dr. Angela Colvett is Senior Lecturer in Educational at the University of Roehampton, specializing in the co-design of games and with her, and for children to support literacy. She regularly collaborates with a round of industry partners and has developed award-winning educational games, including BAFTA-nominated Teach Your Monster to Read. BAFTA is their national Oscars in the UK, so to say. Her current research focuses on the educational potential of transmedia storytelling in school settings. And shortly about Tom, he's a writer, director and educator who has spent the last 12 years refining the adventures and learning model where interactive stories erupt in classrooms and culture venues using immersive theatre and game mechanisms to deliver formal learning and develop people's creativity and critical thinking. Informed by pedagogical practices such as the mantle of the expert, Tom has led the delivery of the adventures to more than 20,000 pupils across the UK. Sounds interesting, right? We're looking forward to the talk and they're gonna talk about how to join the dots, a secret agency that catches and fixes transmedia dreams. In this session, they will present a new game framework for supporting children's transmedia storytelling and gameplay across the curriculum. This emerged from the two-year research product. They're surely gonna talk about that. Funded by the British Academy, exploring the educational potential of the co-design with teachers. So cross-media, transmedia in schools. Angela, Tom, the screen is yours. Welcome.
Thank you very much. And thank you for that introduction and the overview of the work that we're going to be sharing with you today. My name is Angela Colvett, as I say, and I'm a senior lecturer at the University of Brohampton. And I specialize in the co-design of games to support learning. I'm joined today by a collaborator. Have we collaborated on this project? This is Tom. And I'm gonna hand over to him because we're gonna give you a little flavor of our work before we even begin.
I'm Tom, I'm the director of KITT, as the intro said. And we make immersive theatre for, by and with young people. We often work in schools, but we also pop up in museums, libraries and theatres, wherever young people gather to learn, create and play. And yeah, this is exciting because Andrew and I have been flirting professionally for about 15 years. And finally, a couple of years ago, when the dots came through, we could collaborate together. So yeah, to introduce you to the dots, I'm gonna ask you to imagine that you are eight years old. If you are eight years old and watching this, then you're in the perfect place. And you're in your classroom at school. And your teacher's being unusually boring. Perhaps they're talking about the history of concrete in excruciating detail. Or perhaps they printed out all the different shades of the color beige and are slowly taking you through them one by one. Whatever it is, it's super dull. But then suddenly, after about five minutes of this nightmare, the screen behind your teacher erupts unexpectedly and this video plays out.
This is the first clip, please.
This is an official message from Dreams of Time and Space. We are the dots. What do you dream about at night? Where do you travel to? Who do you meet? Where do dreams come from? Dreams are strange, wonderful and powerful things. For centuries, nobody understood how dreams worked. But everything changed when famous scientist and weather forecaster Clara Vestabiel discovered that dreams do not disappear once we have dreamed them. They escape from our brains and form an invisible dream cloud in the sky where they stay bobbing along forever. Millions of dreams are up there right now, invisible in the sky above. The dreams you dreamed yesterday are there, mingling with the dreams of people who lived hundreds of years ago. Clara founded a secret society to study these dream clouds and called it Dreams of Time and Space, or DOTS. That's us. We are the dots. We work with the most imaginative human problem solvers to make dream machines to catch dreams from the sky. We then improve the dreams we find by hacking, tinkering, remixing and fixing them. Finally, we zap the dreams back into the brains of people who need our help. DOTS inventors inspire dreamers to design impossible machines. DOTS explorers guide dreamers to new and exciting places. DOTS detectives help dreamers to discover the mysteries of the past. DOTS reporters inform dreamers about important events. They also send important messages to DOTS headquarters. There is a dream cloud heading towards you. This is your chance to study it. This is your chance to help dreamers in need. This is your chance to join the dots. We'll be in touch again soon. Listen out for our next message.
Thank you for playing that. Sorry, it's playing again on my screen. Apologies. Right, so thank you very much and welcome. That is our introduction to, to the DOTS project. And as you'll find out, some of these events and these gameplay experiences can emerge and erupt at the most unexpected of, of moments. And that is what we, we played in, in the classrooms when we were working in schools. And that was the children's first introduction to the dots. I'm just going to move on, sorry, because we've seen the, we have seen the film now. As, as you heard in the introduction there, this project was, was part funded by the British Academy. And the research question that underpinned it was, how can engaging in the co-design of a transmedia game support teachers to develop digital literacies in primary classrooms? And that is what we'd like to explore with you today. We'd like to share with you what we've learnt about the process of co-design. And as Tom said, we were really excited about the opportunity to work together, but also with teachers and children to develop this. We come to this project from slightly different routes. Mine is primarily an educational background. I worked in schools in a variety of roles in, over about 13 years before then joining Roehampton. And part of my role at Roehampton is, is training teachers. Whilst I was a teacher, I became really interested in this genre of game called alternate reality games. What intrigued me about these and what drew me to them was that they didn't require computer programming skills to create. programming skills to create. You could use everyday technologies such as letters, diaries, phone calls, emails in play. And they involved a mystery to be solved. And not only that, as an educator, I was very excited about the collaboration that these involved. Now I work at Roehampton, I have, I developed a module where the trainee teachers created these playful experiences for children in local schools and thought about how this might support curricular learning. You see the photo in the centre there, that's a group of students who've entered a school in role as agents and they're about to give the children a mission. And you'll see the photographs on either side, the children are then beginning to gather clues and solve that mystery online and offline. Increasingly, my work is also looking at the intersections between gaming principles and immersive theatre and also just technology use in theatre. So that's why it was really exciting to collaborate with Tom because he has a wealth of experience in this area.
Yeah, it was really interesting. When Angela sent me that slide, I was like, well, that's basically what we do in immersive theatre. So it's almost like in the two sectors, the same practice is happening under slightly different names. And with a few different differences, maybe in immersive theatre, live performance comes in slightly more often. But yeah, our adventures in learning work really aligns with all of those ideas. And we have a kind of three-step model that always underpins anything we do, even if it's a one-day adventure or a six-week project, they all have the same sort of core model. And it always begins with a disruption. The little game we played at the start with us imagining we were eight-year-olds in the video bursting into the middle of a boring class is a typical example. But it could be a letter pushed under the door of the classroom and someone is there until someone notices it. Or it could be an actual human being bursting into that classroom unexpectedly, explaining who they are, where they've come from and telling the young people that they have a mission for them. And that mission is always really clear. There's a human or sometimes an alien who requires help. And it just so happens that the young people are in the right place at the right time or have the right skill set to help that individual. And that's where the learning comes in, whatever that mission is, that might require them to engage with history or writing and literacy or geography, whatever it is, it allows the young people to be motivated and focused to dive into their learning. And there's always a creative element of that as well. And then finally, there's achievement, where whatever the young people have done or made is celebrated. And they get to see that that character who asked them for help, who burst into their classroom, they have been helped by what they've done. And so those young people, even if they're five, get that feeling of having had agency to actually change the world for the better. So the two concepts are really closely aligned, ARGs and adventures in learning. Recently, I'm not a technological expert, I'm a theatre maker and a writer and get a bit scared by tech. So it's been interesting for me to start collaborating with partners who bring that expertise to really embed accessible tech into our adventures. In the slide here, you can see two young people using what's known as a SEEK ghost detector, which is from our digital ghost hunt project we're making with the King's Digital Lab. Their young people programme a very simple SEEK ghost detector using their in-school coding skills. And then they take it to a historic venue where they track down ghosts. And you can see our most frightening ghost in the bottom right image there as she appeared at a window. You can also see above her the mechanical eye of our class bot. Now, this is a robot teacher who sends into a classroom, explaining that now robot teachers are a thing. But she breaks down on day one and it's down to the kids to break into her source code and again, use their coding skills to reprogram her so that she works again. And they get a chance to rebuild her personality as well. So the DOTS project was a really exciting new way for us to work with young people, giving them even more creative agency using digital tools.
So what we're talking about here is really the overarching theme here is transmedia play. And I've got some theory here for those people who like to, would like to go back to these and there's references at the end, but I'll just pull out the key points. Here, we have Jenkins, who talks about transmedia play or transmedia storytelling as being a process. And as an educator, that is so important and increasingly something that I'm investigating in my work. Because in schools, because of assessments, the way assessments are framed, often the focus shifts to the end product. You know, what have children created? How have they, you know, provided evidence or demonstrated their learning? And increasingly, and myself and, you know, in this project and working with Tom, we're looking at how learning emerges in the moment and how it evolves. And that is really crucial to our work. And secondly, here I've got a quote from Stevenson and Alpa. And what they're talking about here is about children's experimentation and expression in transmedia play and valuing and acknowledging their cultural engagement and the experiences that they bring to that play. So for us, that's really key and that's our focus today, is looking at this idea of transmedia play.
And I guess, yeah, and I guess the only thing that we do, I guess even more than that is we, our model, there's a big hole in it which needs to be filled by the young people's creativity. So it's like the central column of the structure is the young people need to make something. And I guess as an artist, and I think Angela's an artist in this concept as well, we look to try and design a story which has got a hole in it and it fits nicely with whatever it is that the kids are going to make.
Absolutely, thank you, Tom. And yes, and we'll pull out what that, how that involves technology later on in the presentation. So as I said, our focus today is on co-design and we were really fortunate in this project that we were working, as I said, with artists, with Tom, it was researcher involved, which was myself, but also the teachers and children who brought all of their knowledge and experience to the work. And we learnt so much from working with them. So we were working with five teachers in this pilot from three schools. And here you see some images from a workshop that we ran, Tom and I co-ran a workshop, which involved media production, but also looking at planning and how, and how actually this might be integrated into a school day and how they might bring their own priorities and the children's needs into play.
Yeah. And again, this really resonates with KITT's approach to creative partnerships. Just as we partner with experts in a range of digital tech, we partner with teachers. We can design a world and write characters and make dramatic moments, but we recognise that the teachers are the expert in their domain in the classroom, not only in terms of the basic mechanics of teaching, but they know their class. So when we're planning or building something, we always, again, leave space for the teacher to feed in and try and pivot what we're making to really support what that teacher wants out of it. Do they want their kids to improve their writing or their oracy, their speaking out loud? Do they want them to understand history in a different way? Or do they want them to become skilled in using tech? So we try and be responsive to the teacher's needs and the kind of respect that they're the boss in that domain.
And that's exactly what we did in the DOTS project. You know, fundamental to co-design is absolutely everyone having a part in that process. So just to give you an idea of the timeframe, we were working from January 2019 to December, well, haven't quite finished, December 2021. And we did have a pause in the research, obviously, due to the pandemic. But during that time, we did also begin to develop digital tools, which we later then enabled us to work remotely. So we began with, again, I met with teachers, spoke to them about how they used the technology in their schools already. Then we moved on to phase two, which was the co-design and production, and phase three, developing some of the kind of more planning and theoretical frameworks that we were using in schools.
And this is the framework we came up with, it is a really nice merging of our, I guess, our independent practice. And it begins with joining the dots. So that's that recruitment video, that's a whole set of messaging around, there's this organisation, it needs you, so to make the young people feel valued. And also that arrived disruptively. So again, we're breaking the normal rhythm of a learning environment with, there's something coming in from outside into the classroom and that's hopefully grabs the young people's attention. But also it changes their relationship with their teacher because the teacher's like, well, I don't know what this is, I didn't play this. So suddenly, there's a kind of more democratic atmosphere with them all becoming investigators together. But we can't just ask the kids to go off and design a digital dream and just give them a completely blank slate. You need to provide scaffolding. So we do that by getting them to study a dream. And for us, a dream is kind of story language for a transmedia story. So they got to know those different aspects through studying one, which hopefully then empowered them for step three, which was to fix a dream. So they met a character who was having heavy dreams and had a problem and they needed to mend their dream using their digital skills, their transmedia storytelling, and then use DOTS extraordinary technology to zap it back into the brain of the troubled dreamer.
So here we are. So we could, this is the children, I was very fortunate to be able to go into the classrooms and observe this play in action. And here we see the children who have joined the dots, very proud with their lanyards, their special agent logos, ready to take part in that, in the next stage of play.
And to us, it may not look like much, but to kids who are, you know, seven or eight, it's meaningful to get this recognition, to say, congratulations, you've qualified, you are recognised of having the skills that we need. And so that recognition from these organisations that have power really boosts kids' self-esteem. And it also gives us a nice chance for some play. So we like the theatre around how their membership cards arrive. So one of the things we've done is kids come back in after lunch and another message pops up on the screen which says, look under their chair. And they all look under their chairs and they sort of mess around and then they find their membership card with their agent name room on it. And suddenly, there's this, again, this magical way of them getting these cards and they can personalise them, as you can see, and really go down that avenue. And that, again, it draws them into the world. It's coming from the digital world and it's physically manifesting in their learning space.
Absolutely. And there was lots and lots of excitement when that arrived. And again, talking about this kind of, right early on, we decided that we really needed to approach this, present a kind of modular approach to this design. And when I was speaking with teachers, there were a range of, you know, themes that came up from discussion about the way they might approach this in their classrooms. It ranged from sort of teacher confidence, children's particular needs, the curricular designs within schools, as well as time constraints and resources. Not all schools had as many digital resources as others. So what we did is, you know, looked at that together and created this sort of three-part kind of modular approach to each stage. So first and foremost, if you wanted to join the dots, you could use an application form, which was, which again, sort of Tom wrote, was very, very kind of funny and engaging, an application form for children.
Very silly as well.
Very silly, yes, very silly, very playful. And there was also a design task as well. So you could create a machine. Or if you really wanted to sort of dive in, you could even create your own agency webpage or blog. So there was always kind of different ways in. And we, what we'll have termed this now as a Possibilities and Pathways Planning Tool, which emerged from this.
And just to follow on from that, there's a real importance for that, for artists to have that flexibility. A school is not a stable environment, it's not like a theatre where you can control the lights, every single aspect. You have to build something that can be responsive to changing needs of teachers and schools. Otherwise, it will be too rigid and it will just, it just won't work. And a good example of that is the Dream Catcher. So all of these different aspects here, you can see, we wanted to make something that if they wanted to and had the time, the whole class with their teacher could design their own dream catcher. So they could find something to make a light, some sort of balancing scales, a net, containers, pens and a USB stick. So those are all broadly achievable things. So they could, you know, spend time making it in their classroom. Or if they wanted to, they could hire from the dots the Snooze Snaffler M11ZZ, which we're going to show you now in the next film.
Absolutely. So yes, the second clip, please, of the Snooze Snaffler.
Snooze Snaffler M11ZZ. It has many lights to attract different sorts of dreams. Coloured lights work very well. The scales weigh the dream. These scales are very accurate. Our mission is to fix heavy dreams, which are not so nice, so they become light dreams, which are nice and fluffy, like sherbet sheep. The net is held up very high and is strong enough to catch medium-sized objects from the dream, such as clothes. The cupboard has plenty of room and bright blue lights. The toast racks are the perfect size for storing letters and photographs from the dream. The pen is on an extendable arm so it can move freely. It can catch one or two words from a dream. The film funnel has a long tube and is very good at catching moving images from dream clouds. It has already caught over 20 dreams. The USB stick can be inserted into any computer so the films can be seen on a screen. This is an excellent dream machine for catching dreams from the past. It has even caught a dream from 500 years ago.
You can see there that this would arrive, it could arrive in schools and there was a lot of excitement when that happened. But in terms of the design process, this was also something, as Tom said, that was accessible for children to design themselves. And that film was made by Johnny, we worked with the filmmaker Johnny Clooney from Makinoff Films, who helped us with these high-quality films, but also Luke Wiswell Designs. And we worked with them to create really professional-looking planning documents so that children could draw their designs for their own dream machines and begin to build them together. And as I say, when I was in classrooms, I observed this in action. And here we see some children who have gathered materials from the classroom and are beginning to build one part of the dream machine. And here they are creating scales. Some children were creating lights, others were taking other elements of the dream machine and then they would bring them together. So there was this real sort of sense of collaboration within the, within the class. And also the teacher commented on the level of focus, you know, the level of focus here and the level of engagement, because this task was meaningful to them. They really wanted to join the dots and this task would demonstrate that they had the inventive skills that you needed to do that. So in whatever way children joined the dots, the important aspect here is this fictional frame and that this gives an authentic purpose for learning, this is an authentic context and purpose. So the step two we're going to talk through now was about studying a dream. So interpreting a transmedia story, as Tom said earlier, you know, this is something that was new for teachers, this kind of approach. And we wanted to provide some resources that could be adapted. So in the first phase, we provided some resources about a dreamer called Ada Lovelace.
Yeah, and Ada was really important to us because both Andrew and I, working in this digital context, kind of exploring these ideas, we wanted to go against stereotypes. And sadly, it's true, especially here in the UK, that if you ask a six or seven-year-old, describe to me a scientist or an inventor, 95% will tell you it's a man in a white coat. So Ada Lovelace, who many believe was the first computer programmer, is a really excellent sort of centrepiece for our storytelling. So yeah, so we zoomed in on her very deliberately and with Future DOTS Project, we want to keep championing those who might have been overlooked historically and also go against all of those stereotypes that some other forms of media might be reinforcing for young people. And as you saw with the Dream Catcher, especially in its net, it can capture physical objects and those are really, really key. I've noticed in the last 10 years, a real shift in young people's relationship to tangible physical objects. And my theory is that it's because they're seeing so much of the world through flat glass screens that if you give them an alarm clock or a typewriter, it's exotic, it's full of allure and intrigue. And so as you can see in these slides, there are, there are letters. So a letter is an exotic object to an eight-year-old. They might not receive many actual written letters in their lives. And things to open, storage pots, little tiny things which might seem quite mundane to us, really draw them in. And object-led learning is something that I think is quite key in our work as we're going forward.
What was interesting here is that we provided some resources and some templates that were created by Kirsty Harris, a very, very talented designer that we work with. She created the Snooze Snaffler and these, but teachers also created their own artefacts. So they wrote their own letters using some of the DOTS templates, brought in some of their own items. And you'll see here that the story of Ada is distributed. And you'll see here that the story of Ada is distributed across all these different kind of media. So we've got, yes, so part of the story would be revealed in the letter, part would be revealed in some of the clothes, they got to wear some of the clothes that were caught in the nets up there. And there was lots and lots of excitement, but also these were distributed amongst children. So they would be saying, "I found out this, I found out something else." And they would, you know, collate this information to draw their conclusions about who the dreamer was and why they were having difficulties. They had a film funnel, there was a film funnel, as you're seeing, it was being a film festival. We wanted to show you a clip of the part, just a snippet of part of Ada's dream. So this will be clip three, please.
As you can see, giving hints of the frustration, of the problem she's having, she's trying to solve these ideas of flight and different things and they're not going well. So it's creating that space for the people, like, "Oh, this is what we need to help them." And they make their own transmedia messages.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, the children were very keen, they could see that Ada was having difficulties with her inventions, she was feeling frustrated, the letters like revealed that she was about to give up. And so the children, as agents, DOTS agents, wanted to second, help her, inspire her to keep going and to keep inventing. And as I said, we developed some online, you know, some very simple tools. We have a DOTS website. And if you're an agent, you can log in with your own agent name. And here you can see the agents collaborating online, making plans, interpreting the dream. And this is actually from another iteration, but the principle is the same. You know, they're asking about what the, you know, thinking about what the evidence shows. Agent Argle is me there, kind of asking these kind of prompting questions from DOTS HQ. So we've taken you through then, setting up the importance of the fictional frame. We have started to look at what this transmedia story looks like, how you have to piece together information. And lastly, we're going to look at, now share with you, that crucial element of this transmedia play that Tom highlighted earlier about children co-creating to, children making parts of this project with us. So they were tasked with fixing a dream. So that, what that means is that they needed to improve the dream for Ada. They were going to send back a kind of remixed version to inspire her to keep going with her inventions. Now, the teachers approached this in different ways and not all of them had engaged with stop-frame animation before, interestingly, but actually as part of the project, they decided that they would like to give this a go with their classes. Other teachers decided to just use sound only, interestingly. So they used free music software, BandLab, to create soundscapes. And what is important about this actually is, is that digital dreams are, the idea of dreams is significant because what they do is they are, they're fragmented. You don't need to think about the narrative arc. You can think of the affective aspects, how they make you feel. And so here we have a child reading aloud from a book that she'd found about Ada Lovelace and sort of creating that story, sort of telling her story, her future back to her. We've got them using artefacts here, building props for their, for their film, they're going to make a film. And then we have some children using, using the stop-frame animation. Now, I'm aware of the time, so I'm just going to say this very briefly, this slide here, they were given different departments to work within. And this was significant because, oh, well, I'll let Tom, do you want to say a little bit about this?
Yeah, I think we really wanted to make this accessible to all different superpowers, not just the pupils who were best at doing tech or the best, were best at writing. So those four different teams, those four different sections of inventor, reporter, explorer, detective loosely allowed, you know, different young people to take their moments being the heroes. But also, while they could support curriculum learning, again, responding to teachers, they gave, they could be cross-curricular and they felt a bit different from normal sort of educational classroom classification. So they were, they were quite important.
Yes, and so you could be, you know, explorer in many subject areas or you could link it directly with geography, for example. And ultimately, when they had created these dreams and they had sent them back, yeah, it was success, wasn't it, Tom? There was a big excitement.
And again, that, we mentioned that right at the start, that you have to acknowledge that achievement. And while you might build in peril and drama and is it going to work into the story, deep down, we know it is going to work. What they make will be maybe just enough to get them over the line. And here you can see Ada standing proud, having become the extraordinary lady she was. And young people, again, are recognised through the story of the DOTS for what they've done to change Ada, even though she lived in the past.
So bringing this back to the research, as we said, you know, this was funded by the British Academy and the research that underpinned it, is starting to reveal the importance of these unexpected pedagogical possibilities, these unexpected learning opportunities. And there's a quote here from Burnett et al. colleagues at the University of Sheffield, who are also undertaking exciting work in this area. And they point out that actually, yes, you know, as artists, and we do think about the design of games, of these, you know, these experiences, theatre experiences, but actually we need more research about what happens in practice, particularly when digital technologies come into play. And that's, I think, what we have been doing and looking about in our research particularly. So my research centres on digital literacies. And in this project, the children and teachers were not just developing the skills, the operational, the skills of digital literacies. There were also other elements that were very important. So these ideas of cultural connections with technology use outside of, outside of the school environment, but also critical questions about how we used technology and why and are there ethical implications for this? So this was very, very important and I built on the work of Green for that. So there have been some findings there about digital literacies, but also about pedagogical practice and knowledge exchange. And I'll pass over to Tom for this as well.
I think, hopefully what Thompson says there is true about schools learning from artists and creative practitioners who, going in with their solutions and different approaches and different perspectives, opening up new areas of learning. And certainly that's something we hope when we work with teachers, that there is that exchange. And I run a session called Spycraft for Teachers, where I try and teach them mischievous, unexpected ways to weave adventure into their, their practice. But it's really key also to acknowledge that myself and the artists I work with, we learn a lot from teachers. When we, when I have an actor in a classroom, they're constantly absorbing cues from the teacher around how to break down a problem, how to engage with different ages of young people. So for me, that knowledge exchange really does go both ways and that's always the legacy of these projects.
And I think certainly as well, sort of from the university perspective, from, you know, from research, I think this was a really powerful opportunity as well to develop research, develop understanding in collaboration with artists and schools as well. And actually, this is, this is, this idea of observing practice and actually learning from the participants, their experiences, has been certainly very rich for us and helped us shape this project. One of the, the terms or one of the concepts that I've been developing through this research is about transmedia storying as a pedagogical practice, as a teaching and learning practice, as a playful practice. And this idea that actually this is a collaborative and iterative, you know, approach that's shaped in the moment by material people and places. So this, it looks different in different settings when different people come together. And all of the things that we've been pulling out in our presentation today about improvisation and flow, this idea that children have, and teachers have choice and freedom, that this was inclusive, you know, the departments, the approaches included, encouraged children to bring in those cultural experiences to the task at hand. And not only that, when this game, when the film begins, it shifts the teacher role. So actually, the teacher becomes a player, the teacher becomes a learner, and that's absolutely key to this approach. In terms of dismantling curricular boundaries, again, you know, this, this was a whole day of play. It wasn't segmented into these sort of, these structures, these subject structures. But yet the teachers and the children recognised that there were strands of curricular learning throughout the day. The use of space materials was shaped by, you know, by the artist's practice, by Tom's practice and by the other artists that we worked with, but also the teachers as well decided where to place the machines, what else they might add to the, to, to the dream machine, for example. And this playful purpose really gave this authentic learning experience for, for children. And it was something that I think all of us, teachers and researcher and Tom included, really enjoyed the process too. So we have come to the end and we're going to, we can't sort of stop before kind of thanking the people we worked with and first and foremost, the teachers and children who we work with in the participating schools. Unfortunately, we can't name them because of the research and the ethical implications, I would if I could, but certainly we could not have done this without them. So thank you to all those schools and children.
And also our amazing designer Kirsty Harris, known as Kirsty Harris Makes Things, and she does, and she's a genius at responsive design as well as responsive storytelling, a maker who can make responsibly is key. And also Emma McClellan, who's one of Kit's key associates and who's glorious Scottish tones you heard throughout the videos, and also she played Ada Lovelace.
And the web design, we worked with a talented web designer, Paul Bellamy from Bellamy Studios, who created our DOTS website and all of the behind-the-scenes blogs that enabled us to work remotely. So thank you, Tim. And the filmmaking as well, Johnny Clooney from Makinov helped to sort of bring the dream machine to life. And also, yeah, those, those key films that really brought actually this practice into, into classrooms. And lastly, the graphic design by Luke Weisfeld, Luke Weisfeld Designs created all of the, the high-quality badges that you saw, anything related to DOTS, really logos, all of those things were really crucial kind of to the, to the quality of the, of the products that we did. So there are some references, I know you can't read them now, but I can share them for anyone who is interested. Oh, they're on the big screen now, I believe, so there we go. But also, here, Tom, did you want to say a little bit about?
You can find out more about DOTS, dots.team, that's the website of the DOTS. You can probably even try and sign up and see what happens. There's kittheatre.org, which is Kit, and there's argle.net, which is Angela and all of her adventures.
Yes, which is, that's currently in development, so, but increasingly more and more will be, will be there. So if you do have any questions or ideas, this is our contact. You can get in contact with both of us on Twitter or via email. And if there are any questions, we'd be delighted to, to answer. But we hope you enjoyed our leading through the adventure of the DOTS and thank you for, for inviting us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you lovely, we did, and we do have questions. And one comes from the audience, from Eric. He's saying that game design are deeply immersive for students of all ages, not just young ones. I wish more teachers were taught to design curricular through game design. And he has a question, "How often a year do you hijack those boring classes?" And I would add myself also, some questions from the scope of the project, like how many schools you had involved and how big is the project, what happened after the pause, are you going to extend the project?
In terms of Kit's work, we work with perhaps maybe 20 to 30 schools a year and our projects are one-day projects sometimes, when the whole thing happens in one day. The DOTS was over a few days, but we do do projects that last a whole six weeks, which might start with a low-key letter arriving and slowly build throughout a whole project or a topic with a big theatrical ending. So yeah, so we're trying to disrupt as many schools as possible at the moment.
Yes, and in terms of where next for the DOTS, this was very much a pilot, small budget, and, but we, you know, we work creatively within that. And we worked, as I say, with five, five teachers over three schools. So it was a small pilot initially, but we have now developed this approach, as you say, this modular approach. And we are now looking to, to extend that with more schools and be able to distribute this more widely in collaboration with another university as well. So, so yeah, so hopefully, you know, watch this space, we'll be, we'll be developing this and this will go into more and more schools now we have undertaken this research.
And I really wish that it goes even internationally, not only in the UK context. And are you willing for that? Like Tom, is Kit Theatre is willing to implement international projects?
Definitely, I'm really interested. I'm actually, with the Ghost Hunt project I briefly mentioned, we're really excited to have a, maybe pair up a class in the UK with a class somewhere else. And they might both dig up some treasure or some clues and they have to combine them together using online technology to solve the puzzle. So I quite like doing a kind of a double act between classes in different countries, but they have to work together to solve the mystery. So I'm really, that's an idea that I've been trying to work out how to do for quite a long time.
Absolutely. And in terms of, you know, the project, although we couldn't pull it out in this time with the DOTS project, underpinning it is actually quite a lot of STEAM education, which is in science, technology, engineering, arts and maths. And there was some really exciting work that was undertaken by Sheffield University, who led on a European-wide project called the Makey Project, which was looking at these, you know, looking at creating kind of these maker spaces across Europe in different, in different settings. And I think, you know, there is, there is absolutely sort of potential to use this, this sort of gaming approach or this kind of playful theatrical approach to support the development of maker spaces. And that's something that I'm currently developing idea with colleagues to do as well. So yeah, so if anyone's listening and is interested in sharing ideas, please do get in touch with us both, that would be wonderful.
Wonderful, thank you. It was lovely, it was super interesting to hear your experience, yourself, Angela, as a professor from academia, researcher, joining with a bunch of practitioners, Tom and others. And it's used, that you're running a research, that's also very amazing, since it's a new medium, new technologies, then people are so blaming that's not enough of research, should we do or not? So congratulations, best luck with your project. I hope you scale it and proceed with it and we keep on hearing the findings of your project. So thank you very much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Lovely, thank you. And with no further ado, we move on to our next presentation, which is given for us by Mika Johnson and his experience, Ilios, VR meditation on coronavirus pandemic. Mika Johnson is a multimedia artist interested in dreamlike narratives, mythos, ritual and biodiversity. While his concentration is on designing XR experiences, he also works with many other mediums, including as a film director for fiction and documentaries, documentary projects and many more, a lot of artistic collaborations with other artists. I hope Mika will address some of his most interesting projects himself shortly presenting because I'm not going to name the whole bunch of what he's doing, what kind of creative person he are. And he also makes music with collaborators. You can find more about him on mikajohnson.com. And before I give a floor for him, he and his project, which will be about VR meditation on the coronavirus pandemic, and the talk will be on the creation and distribution of VR pieces conceived during the global shutdown, when Johnson was stuck in North America for three months. The resulting piece, quoted remotely, was a meditation and conversation intended to discuss the meaning of COVID-19 in the artist's personal lives.
Hello, I'm IFF, thank you very much for inviting me to this talk. I'm very sorry that I can't be here right now because I'm right now actually in virtual reality and tutoring a group of institutions to use virtual reality together whilst their political situation in their countries might be not so stable. They can't use any other means of communication right now. So Mika and I, we have been working together for two or three years now. And my initial love for virtual reality has actually been kindled at the Baas University in Beimer, at the VR Systems Group. There I saw for the first time that high technology and human beings can actually mix and mingle. And I also saw there the first multi-user experiences, which just means that you're not isolated and alone in VR, but you can rather share experiences and interact with each other and also have avatars and other very nice features. So maybe a little bit about myself, my name is Marcel Knappke and I've worked And I've been working for over 10 years now in virtual reality, but also in many different other kinds of technology based sectors where art, science and technology intersects. And especially with Ilios, we have put many different things from all of these aspects and angles into the final piece. And that's a little bit the stuff that I'm going to talk about today. So I've got also some questions here and I'd like to answer them. So let's start up with the first one. Can virtual reality really serve as a cure or an alleviator of loneliness we experiences and how? There's a kind of maybe that I'd like to say here because I totally believe that there's no single thing, no single device or a single medium that can break through profound loneliness. I believe these are stepping stones towards alleviating the pain of loneliness. But I also believe that there is much more required and needed to make you less lonely. Virtual reality has come quite far in the last 10 years, which means there's the price point that has dropped and there's also the possibility to totally go mobile and wireless, which means potentially we could go into the forest and put on a headset. And through the sharing of positional data, we can both or we can all see each other and wander and gather in virtual worlds. But there's also the thing that with Ilios, we kind of designed an experience that is lonely in a way and still very profound and still very moving and touching. And we also believe that you could obviously connect in virtual reality directly and interact with each other. And there's a lot of companies that are into that and a lot of applications that give you these opportunities now. But with Ilios, we are rather thought that we would take a piece of nature and forest and show it in an entirely different way. And also put in the narrative of the situation that we're in right now, in a way globally. And then make people after the experience actually seek context to others and try to talk and discuss the profound things that they felt and saw during the experience. So there are basically many ways to tackle loneliness through virtual reality or through this medium. But in the end, I believe it all starts and it all ends with human beings. There's nothing in the world, I believe, that is going to work without having somebody else to talk to and to interact with. The next one is what are the aspects that drive the choice of a medium in telling a story? Well, that's a very good question because I think in the beginning, we always tend to think about the concept and we tend to think about where will this take place? What's the audience going to look like? What's the audience going to look for? And so as I've been working in theatre and in opera and in ballet and in fine art, actually, I have been through many different kinds of mediums and many different kinds of people that want to participate and interact with the art. And with technology especially, it's also about the user experience and the design components so that people can be eased into experiences. Mainly it is about the shift, obviously, that came with the pandemic. Physically meeting has become more complex. And so it's important to choose the right kind of canvas and circumstances to create your project and to make it work. But the good thing about working in the digital realm, I have to admit, is that sometimes you can transfer from one realm to another or from one platform to another quite a lot of the things that you wanted to say. So for example, with Ilios, it all started with laser scans. Then it became a video. And from the video, we actually wondered, could we make this a experience where you could actually dive in? Because we thought the rules of capturing in a way holographically an environment are that you also need to replay this in a surrounding 360, 3D environment. And to be honest, films, like 360 films or just looking around is sometimes not enough. And with these kinds of data, like these data points, it's very crucial that it is real time and that it can actually be experienced. And people have a choice in a way because they are inside an application instead of inside a single medium. So the last question is, how do you translate a personal experience into a collective and perceptible for nearly everyone? Well, that actually goes a little bit back because I've been working in 2012 together with the Cambridge University and the Archaeological Department on a project where I learned from the archaeologists that there's something in their research that they call strong universals. That is things that don't change in thousands and thousands of years. And that's, for example, our physiology, our hands, the position of our heads and all of these beautiful things. Whilst policies might change and the culture might change and even language will change. And some things might be new and some things might be actually go extinct. And so actually, I'm looking forward always to design things that are not working with language, direct language, but have rather also strong universals. Two things that come to mind is obviously music as well as the visual parts of the experience. And that's why I like to concentrate on that. And whenever we would use language, it should be possible to also translate these languages into many others. But mainly to make an experience the way that we experienced it, maybe together with Mika. It's quite crucial to think about the moments that inspired us the most and trying to replicate them in the virtual environment. For example, we are also thinking about another part of creating the next piece in this series or making this a series. And I just remember now that we went into the forest at night in total darkness because of the laser scanners systems that operate without any light source required. And that was quite interesting, a feeling to be in the woods at night with a holographic device and trying to capture not only the visual but also field recording the sounds and then putting that back in. And that's quite possible to entirely replicate in the medium. Yes, maybe to conclude this talk or the things that I'm thinking about right now. With Mika, we have just found in a way a treasure trove of possibilities with this intersection of science, art and technology. And we believe that it's important for people to maybe even go into the woods with a VR headset and put it on and experience the woods and the forest maybe through the eyes of a bird and being able to fly up through the top of the trees or getting shrunk down to the size of an ant and walking over the structures of the bark as well as actually going into the root structure and being there and seeing the interconnectedness. And then also obviously removing the headset again, being enriched by these perspectives and then walking through the forests anew together and thinking about our surroundings and the richness of our environments in different terms. What I'm saying here is virtual reality is a medium that should be experienced and should be used to enrich the things that surround us, but not to replace them at all. So it's always important to keep that in mind, that we are not trying to end the world by simulating it, but rather enriching it by giving us perspectives and options and possibilities that are just only possible in this kind of medium. Thank you very much.
Mika's collaborator Marcel Karnapke, who is doing another first project together. And now hello, Mika. Do we have you with us?
Hello. Hi. Yes, I'm here. Hello everyone.
Rika IFF. Thank you. And I'm glad that although Marcel couldn't be here, he could join us on this video where he starts to explain not only Ilios, but I think a number of projects that we're now working on in VR that relate to, as he said, this connection between art and science and immersive technologies. So I'll just, my hope was to jump right in and give you some backstory a bit more with some images related to how we created or in a way, why we created Ilios since it came out of the shutdown, actually, and things that we didn't expect. And then open it up to a Q and A where we could have a more just approach, like a conversation related to maybe some more specifics and even related to what Marcel was already talking about. But so I'll jump in and just say that originally this project that Marcel was speaking about, which is called Found Forms, was based on going to Nantes-Buch in Bavaria and spending time in the forest with this laser scanner, as he mentioned, so that we could capture these elements there. So laser scanning trees specifically and then reconstructing in post the Mycorrhizal networks beneath them to show how they connect to each other, they communicate with each other and that whole forests have been reclassified even as superorganisms because they're a complete ecosystem with the, let's say, mushrooms and fungi and other plants that are all interconnected with them. And so the inspiration, just to make sure, I hope my screen is sharing good, came in a way from Paul Stamets, an American mycologist, but then a number of other actual mycologists. But him in particular, because Paul Stamets is, his focus, it's less on mushrooms themselves, which are the fruiting bodies of this mycelium and more on these Mycorrhizal relationships that I've been speaking about. So really what's beneath the surface. And as VR gives us this tool to really reimagine space, this became inspiring to us, thinking about, well, if a forest is just the tip of an iceberg, then we would be able to actually allow people to move under that forest as if it were, let's say, under a glass ceiling and you could look up at the trees above you, but that you could move through what's beneath it. And the space of the residency, and this took place in February 2020, was here in Bavarian. This image you could see down. It's very small, I'm sure, but there is Nantes-Buch, this foundation, which is connecting art and nature. And just very briefly, there are two types of fungi that we were interested in representing. So the saprophitic fungi, who, these are the recyclers of nature, and the ectomycorrhizal fungi. And these are the ones who connect to the roots of trees and form symbiotic relationships where they share nutrients back and forth. And even trees can share far beyond that, communicate many different things which we're learning about and which is, that's why Paul Stamets for us is an inspiration. And so regarding thinking of mushrooms as recyclers, we found one dead tree on site, which we then scanned. And you can see Marcel there and the tree that we scanned. And then the second tree, which we're going to use to represent the mycelium below, was another solitary tree on site. And our idea was so to re-represent both of these trees in virtual reality and then create an experience which showed the fungal relationships in both cases. And then people could put on the headsets onsite at Nantes-Buch and ideally take off their shoes and walk in the spaces where these trees are. So as Marcel was saying, kind of not just think of what we could give them in virtual space, but how they could take off their headset and then reconnect to what's actually there in the physical space. And we could sort of bridge these two and talk about the things that, in a way, both spaces allow us to learn about our connections to nature. And here you can see some of the laser scans. And this is a video not worth going into, I think, because I would prefer to move through this faster. But I do want to say one last thing that, as Marcel said as well, when we think about an experience in virtual reality related to mycelium, Paul Stamets also inspired us in terms of thinking of, this isn't just a fungal structure. It's more a form that you can see repeated at all levels of reality. So at the micro and macro cosmic level. And we also wanted to deal with that as well in our project. And so I'm showing you some kind of mycelium under an electron microscope. But then Stamets puts in his book these other images, for example, of neurons or the brain and then the branches of trees. And then superclusters, so the largest formations of galaxies in clusters in the universe. And you see this repeating form and you can see the same forms in lightning. You can see it when we have maps or models of the worldwide web. And there again is a model of a supercluster. And so we really started imagining that you would at some point escape this representation of the mycelium and nature beneath the tree and then be able to move out into these other forms so that you could compare, for example, say, the worldwide web to what Stamets calls the woodwide web, which are these Mycorrhizal relationships beneath trees. But now I bring up this poster for Ilios because what happened is, what everyone knows, that was February 2020 and things got shut down right after in March. And so what happened during that time for Marcel and I is I traveled to the States and I got stuck there for over three months and our project got shut down. At the same time, Nantes-Buch put out a call for a new project, which was a video that would relate to the pandemic and nature. And we decided we would do both a video but also a virtual reality piece based on the tree scans or the laser scans that we had of trees. Only now we would tell a very different story and one based on what we were experiencing at that moment. And in my case, I was living in a cottage in rural New York. And in Marcel's case, he was in Berlin. And we were having this correspondence and talking about what was the meaning of this thing, not just in our personal lives, but also how were we thinking about this larger frame? And so I'll play you just a clip because I think it's important in terms of giving you a bit of context here. I'll just jump in. So, yeah, I think that
We can repeat?
It's hard for... Hello?
Yeah, we can maybe repeat the video with the sound in the end of the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did the sound not work?
Yeah, it didn't work.
Okay, well, it's unfortunately, I would say it's half about the sound in this case because it's all about, well, you got to see the images. And in this case, the piece begins with almost no point cloud dots whatsoever. And then it's slowly coming towards you and then begins to manifest. Give me one second, I just have to plug something in here. It begins, it begins to manifest into this other image that you saw, which is a mirror of these laser scans. And at the same time, we're talking about the coming of this virus and the spreading as we experienced it from culture to culture and throughout the world. But it's also very much a meditation on nature and trying to see ourselves in relation to this, not as something separate from us, but something that we're a part of. And I'm happy to say more on that. But I think continuing along this line of talking about the potential of VR and its relationship to storytelling and audiences and distribution, I just want to say that in the beginning, this piece had a very large budget and a sort of very ambitious, and it still exists, actually. We have another project called Lost Forms, which now has received funding and it's connected to Found Forms. I could say more about that as well. But I think the point I wanted to get at is that with losing our funding and losing the ability to make that project for us was also a good thing in the end because we were kind of forced to just be creative with what we had. And then we ended up making this piece kind of just for ourselves in a way. And it's ended up traveling to seven festivals and it's still being invited. And that's been interesting for me, especially when I speak to students because I think the hard part with virtual reality, at least in the other projects that I'm doing, is they have very large budgets often and very large teams. And so when we're talking about how to create your first piece or to imagine, you know, how can I just use some very basic tools and tell a story in VR that's relevant and can have an audience? To me, this piece was a great example of that. And so, yeah, I think I would, it would be nice now to just kind of open it up and take whatever questions. And I'm happy to speak about any different direction that anybody might want to talk about.
Yeah, we don't have yet the questions from the audience, but I'd like to ask some questions myself from what you just shared. So you're kind of saying that a creator can start making a piece without huge budgets, right? And your story is that during the coronavirus, when everything stopped, that's what has happened. I mean, you had looked at your material, what you have, and you developed what you have developed.
That's right. Yeah, and that's not usually the case. I mean, the other projects I'm working on, one is a quarter of a million euro, and another one is the development funds alone are at 50,000 euro. And that's just to develop the project so that we can get the actual funding. One is the Infinite Library, the first one I mentioned, and that's through the support of the Goethe Institute. And the other is Lost Forms through the support of Expanding Focus in Leipzig. And yeah, and I think, I think it's important that people don't feel limited, though, in the sense of, we did have a laser scanner, we did have a residency. Laser scanners are expensive to rent. But at the same time, just using something that we captured very basically in several days and then playing with those scans and then capturing sound and, you know, using audio is a major part of that storytelling device. Yes, we created something simple that I think is poetic and very personal, which in this case, I think, was an important part of the story.
So we have your video ready to see, so let's run it with the sound.
Okay, so I think from one minute and 50 seconds is a good point. Thank you.
March 16th. Germany closes its borders to help slow the spread of the coronavirus. Four days later, the US does the same. International air travel shuts down. We are told to self-isolate. Nature knows no borders. It has no inside, no outside. Nature is indifferent. My second flight back to Germany is canceled. Phone call from Marcel. Stay safe. Take care. A new struggle begins. Anxiety. Fear. People everywhere are dying. Nature is change. You do not control change. You are change. I imagine.
Yeah, this time we had sound. And one more question from my side also that
Sure.
Of course, I see you are the artist which already has a track record of works, yeah, premiered. And you always have the support. So you still are that part of the artists who develop the ideas, raise the funding slowly, waits until it arrive, develops maybe something in a parallel or on your own capacity, and you're still waiting for those capacities to deliver what you actually thought of, right?
Yes, in the case of, for example, the Infinite Library, I was on tour with a project called VR Vanlung, which it happened, VR Vanlung happened exactly as you just said. It was a long wait. The Goethe Institute had not previously funded a VR piece. So it was the first, and I happened to be in Prague making a film on Kafka, also very knowledgeable about Kafka. And it was the right place and time to create such a piece. And then it went over to over 50 cities. And this, in the end, opened up many doors for me. And so then the Goethe Institute in New Delhi approached me if we could come up with the project together. And so then this became my second big piece, which will be released in February. So in that case, I didn't have to wait for the funding. I simply had to come up with a pitch that worked and then work with, start to create a team and then propose a budget, and it went forward. But in the case of Lost Forms, which is the companion piece to this one that Marcel and I have been speaking about, that happened when I was at Doc Neuland and just on stage in a sort of presentation forum, speaking about Found Forms and what we were hoping to do in Nantes Book as part of that residency and then hoping through taking whatever we had in terms of data at that residency and taking that to somebody else, which would, who could fund the larger piece and somebody in the audience, Alex Hermann is this producer in Leipzig. And I began to speak about, did we have, Marcel and I, did we have another idea in relation to using VR to help people connect to larger ideas related to nature, biodiversity and immersive technology? And that's how, and then through that wrote a pitch. And several months later, he was able to go to the German Film Fund and get the development funds. So in both cases, there wasn't much of a weight in terms of those two projects, but I've certainly experienced that as a filmmaker. And I think that the main thing is to keep busy and to keep going and to keep creating. And I do that on all other levels in many different mediums, including making music, photography, writing. And I think that all of that then also comes into when you finally do get the funding for a VR piece, since it's such a multimedia experience that you're going to be drawing upon all of those skills if you develop them as a visual artist, or you're using sound design, or you're using music, or you're using text. In my case, it's been creating installations, which has gotten more and more a big part of what I want to include in the VR experience because I think that that makes sense. And so, yes, yeah, I can only make as a recommendation that during those long waiting periods, to stay very active on all other fronts.
And once again, you mentioned that the first work was successful in distribution. Could you give a comment about that success, how that happens? And because very often in traditional pitching forums, they ask, oh, you're making a VR piece, but it's such a small market. How are you going to stream? How are you going to distribute?
Sure.
What's your comment on that?
Yeah, well, in the case of VR Vanlung, it was a four-minute piece, which is an adaptation of Kafka's The Metamorphosis. And it was made or commissioned by the Goethe Institute in Prague. And it was very success, it was open for two months in full every day. And then there was dozens of articles and the TV came because people from all over the Czech Republic, teachers especially, were bringing high school kids to the piece, which was filling up the space daily and creating even more excitement. And then we had an article in The Economist. And this continued to just kind of grow. And at the same time, the Goethe Institute alone has 150 institutes worldwide. So any of those institutes could also ask for the project to be installed and presented. And so this became a major hub, which was part of that tour. But at the same time, thanks to the press, we did a large festival circuit as well and were invited to book fairs and other events to present the piece as well. So in, but in that case, I think for those of you out there who are thinking how to maybe start your first piece and what will your distribution be? If you can work with a cultural institute, I can only speak from my experience, if they have a lot of different partner institutes or just a lot of other, let's say, partners in general, this gives you an internal distribution system that can suffice in terms of numbers if you're thinking in terms of, well, how am I going to even have some small success, which will allow me to take my next piece, which might have a larger budget, and pitch that to producers or distributors?
Thank you, Mika, a lot for sharing your success or your way of creating projects and producing them. Very thankful for your insights and just want to add that we, for the audience, for those who live in Riga, that we also have Ilios film in Splendid Palace in the venue where you can come today and tomorrow from 6 o'clock and experience it yourself. And thank you, Mika. Thank you. Best wishes from Marcel. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you all and enjoy the rest of the festival.
Yeah, we are.
Bye-bye.
See you soon someday.
I hope so. Bye-bye.
All right, so with no further ado, our conference is heating up, I would say. And let's move to our next speakers, which are Anish Barai and Emma Cooper. And they're going to talk about Storyland, designing storytelling experiences in VR for children. Shortly about speakers, Dr. Anish is a lecturer in educational and digital literacy with a specialism in children's media and culture. He has been teaching at universities across UK for the past 10 years and is editor for academic journal, Joenersa Young People Text Cultures. He's an interdisciplinary researcher in education and literature, researching youth cultures and literacy media representations of education. His research interests are particularly on text and media representations of diverse childhoods and young people's political agencies. And he has published on queer, post-colonial and eco-activistic childhoods in children's literature, television and film. And Emma is a digital producer and creative business leader working at Immersive Technology Studio Cooperative Innovations. Emma is an accomplished leader in digital strategy and has worked in interactive design for nearly 20 years. She worked on a number of BAFTA-winning projects, including producing a game that was recreated by astronauts aboard in the International Space Station. Her focus on matter, the role on sector, is how much fun humans have when they interact with technology. Emma cares a lot about people at both ends of the process, the makers and the audiences. So Emma and Anish, nice that you're joining us. Are you here with us? Yes, I see you, and the screen is yours. Welcome to tell more about what you're working on.
Hi, thank you very much. Can you see my screen?
We see you, not your shared screen yet. But I will let you know when it comes. Yes, we do. Now we see your slides.
Thank you very much. Okay, so today we'll be talking about a project that Emma and I and our colleague, Dr. Becky Parry, who unfortunately can't be here today, have all been working on over 2020 called Storyland. And what we'll do is we'll kind of share discussing these four kind of key points together. So how we work together from the stage of idea to implementation and presentation to an audience, how we aim to use XR technology to reach and interact with the young audience, how we built bridges between academia and the tech industry, and finally, the role of storytelling in XR to support children's play. So first of all, we'll just briefly introduce ourselves and the project, talk about, just as we're hearing in the last talk as well, how the pandemic had a major effect on what we had planned for the project and what we could then do with the project, and then talk through some of those elements as just listed. So I'll hand over to Emma to introduce herself first.
Hello, it's really nice to be invited to speak here. This is very exciting for Saturday afternoon. And my background is in game design and also in learning. I've done a lot of work creating interactive things on screens for children, specifically as an audience, for a long, a long time during my career. In the last five years, I've shifted from 2D screens to immersive and working with cooperative innovations. And a big part of that shift, it was really And a big part of that shift, it was really noticeable to me that there hasn't been a lot of work done in any kind of exploration into how young audiences can use this new tool. Obviously, the hardware isn't specifically designed for children. But we know that children are using the headsets. So what can we learn and what can we think about that? So we had an opportunity come through a funding partner through York University called XR Stories. And we were lucky enough to get paired up with Sheffield University to start to explore this. So do you want to take over, Anish?
Yeah, so I'm a lecturer in education and digital literacy at the University of Sheffield. And my main work here is on a new program that started last year called Digital Literacies, Culture and Education, a master's program which is run by Becky Parry. And Becky and Emma kind of started this project together in early 2020. And then I joined in when I started at Sheffield in, I think around May-June 2020. So more to say about XR Stories, they're working on a few projects with Sheffield at the moment, including one called Storybox and another called Awesome Animals. So looking at use of AR and VR in children's cultural experiences and storytelling in particular. And yet this Storyland project, as Emma was saying, is specifically looking at younger children, who initially were planning for children aged eight to 12, and their use of VR headsets to tell stories. Emma, do you want to introduce the project?
Yeah, so we have, at Cooperative Innovations, we have a set of tools that we've been using. We use Unreal Engine as the base of our development. And we have a set of tools that we've been using and developing over the last five or six years. One of them is an inverse kinematics solver, which means that we can do almost full-body avatar animation. We also have the ability to bring multiple people together into a digital space to create a social experience plus to record any kind of performance. So we'd had this idea for, we called it storytelling for a really long time, for an application so that people could effectively do some puppetry, create stories and then share, share those experiences. We've not specifically thought about it in terms of children. When this funding came up for the research, I was really interested in how children could potentially use this tool. When we first pitched the research, we had intended to run a number of small workshops with children between the ages of 12 and 15. After we received the funding, obviously the pandemic hit and we were no longer able to do anything in person. We pivoted and we were able to recruit a number of families, which we sent headsets out to. So I believe it was 12 families in the end, each had a headset sent to their home. We almost had to recruit the parents as research assistants because they needed to help us to talk to the children about what this hardware is. And then Becky and Anish conducted a number of interviews over some Zoom panels. So what that did was it meant that siblings of the children were automatically included, which meant actually the age range of the children we were talking to dropped massively, which was really interesting. But it wasn't quite what we started out with the intention. So it meant that we had to start to think about different problems and different issues. So obviously, children who are younger, their reading age is different. Their understanding of the world is different. So we had to, we had to change the development of the product quite substantially, which meant that the period of time for the research got longer. But actually, in the end, what happened was the headsets were in the families' homes for over a year, which meant that we actually got really good information about how families are interacting with this, this new piece of hardware. So Storyland, in the development of the prototype, and it is just proof of concept. We, we knew that we wanted to be able to enable the children to tell a story. So we were trying to think about how, how we could do that easily within proof of concept, given all of our constraints and how much cost is involved with making things. We didn't, we weren't going to be able to create a sandbox, something that was, you know, endless possibilities. So we decided to go with a three-act structure and adding in the constraint that we designed the first act. So we designed the first act and then we wanted the children to respond to that first act and create a second act and a third act. So, and as some kind of a response to the setup and then a conclusion. But as we'll see, as we talk about it, there were different positives and negatives in those creative decisions as we went along. In terms of how we work together, what, what we, what we had started out thinking was going to happen and what actually happened were two very different things. And we, we ended up providing a set of design documents to the group of families and talking with the families about what they understood with those design documents, what they thought about our idea. And what came back from that was that the children were specifically interested in their agency in the story. They don't use language like that. They, they say it in terms of, I want to be the main character or I, I want to take charge in the story. And the other thing that was really important to them was kind of that freedom of story-making. So they weren't massively keen on us dictating what the beginning of the story was. But in the rest of the product, the tool, they have a lot of agency. So we kind of, we, we made some decisions sort of in collaboration with them. One of the things that Anish did really early on in the process is he introduced them to the ladder of participation. So as a, as a, an industry professional, I, I've done user research, but I've not, I don't think I've conducted user research in an academic way before. So it was really interesting to learn the proper academic way to do research. So on the ladder of participation, our, our young people and families were kind of like midway up. So we, we wanted them to be involved and we wanted to hear what they had to say. But ultimately, the technology constraints and the things that, that we need to consider needed to be a priority over what they wanted. So they were kind of like not on the top row, like the second room down. Do you want to speak any, a little bit about your part in this, Anish?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you're saying, Anna, it started off, the plan was just to have some sessions where we had all the children together in one room with headsets. We introduced them to how to use it. We got them to try things out and take their responses from it. But having had to slow that down to, you know, at least, I think, 10 months with the headsets, and we could then gain different kinds of ideas, data, information from them. So we asked the parents to, with their consent, of course, to record them playing, to interview them about what they thought about it, just one or two-minute videos. And we found out so much more about how they felt about other games on the Oculus headsets and also what they thought about the games that Cooperative Innovations made. So they tried out a game that has already come out, Space Team, which they hugely enjoyed and is a collaborative game. So the children could play it together in groups. And then also after testing, Storyland, we could watch them playing it. We could see the recordings that came from their performance in it. And then also we could hear them talking about it with their siblings and parents. So it meant, you know, gaining a kind of unexpectedly different and more data than, than we'd anticipated. So there were things that we had wanted to do, such as a final beta test, where the children introduced other children to the game and talked with them through it. So then it would have been very high up the ladder of participation and involving the children in a much more kind of interactive way. But since we weren't allowed to have children in a room together like that, as you say, it couldn't be as participatory. But still going through that sort of iterative process of talking to them, finding out what they found interesting, working that into the making of the game and then getting their feedback on what was produced in the game.
It was really, it was really useful to have the, the video from the parents because conducting user testing with VR is complex in and of itself anyway. But being able to see the children, specifically one of the, one of the younger, much smaller participants, watching her fighting with darkness controllers, like, they're just far too large for her hands. But she was so engaged and so completely excited and overwhelmed by the prospect of what was happening, that she was just, she was making it work. She was fiercely making it work. And we would only have known that through the video. We wouldn't have got that from, we received recordings of what was experienced in the VR experience. But having that additional perspective of what was happening in the physical world really helped us to understand. And I think, given some more time, we could approach a lot of UI completely differently. We would approach a lot of, a lot of things differently, given more time. So originally, one of the things that we really wanted to explore was inclusivity. We really wanted to explore how and if the technology would speak to a different kind of audience. So we wondered, one of, one of the things that we wondered was, if by being in a virtual world, if that would change children's inhibitions. So generally, lots of children are not very inhibited in performance. They're quite happy to dance and play and share stories. But some children struggle with embarrassment or anxiety around performance. And we wondered if being very sheltered within a headset, if that might change their perceptions around that. Unfortunately, all of the nuances around that were completely kind of, just had to be popped and put to one side because of the, because of the pandemic. The other, the other things that we wanted to explore was identity. So we have the ability to make these avatars. And avatar is such an important part of embodiment and such an important part of personal identity. But because of our time restrictions and just the massive crunch that happened as a result of the pandemic, we had to max sick. We were all working remotely for the first time ever. We just, unfortunately, we never got to that part. So that's a part of the research that I'd really like to explore in more detail, especially given Anish's speciality, speciality. I don't know the correct terms, sorry. The other things that we wanted to explore was children's understanding, understanding of media worlds. So we know from Dr. Becky Parry's previous research, we know that children live very embodied experiences of children's story worlds. They, they mix and mingle brands and stories. So Minecraft and the Marvel Universe are one and the same to a lot of this audience. They're, they're not separate brand or IP. They are all the same thing and they can, in their play story, in their play, they will blend all of these things. So one of the things that we're really interested in with storytelling is, would that come through? And our hope for the product as we develop it is to include lots of different kinds of brands so that we can replicate how children play in the physical world. Do you want to speak a little to this, Anish?
Yeah, absolutely. So one thing I was, I was very happy to be involved in early on in the project was just a literary review around what existing research is there around storytelling and virtual reality and inclusive design. And it turns out, a lot of research shows that virtual reality can be a very supportive space for neurodivergent people, so autistic people in particular. There's research by Gelsamini and Garzalto showing that virtual reality settings can be very supportive. It can be, according to the research, you know, a very effective tool for visual learners. It can filter out external stimuli, which can be distracting. And exactly as Emma was saying, it can be individualizable and adaptable for, for people. It can be a space for self-expression. Other ways that design of games can be really inclusive for autistic people in particular is through creating collaborative contexts where people need to work together and communicate. This has been shown in a lot of research to be effective. And as I say, this is something that CI already does in its games, which are participants. We had a diverse range of participants, a neurodiverse range, a racially diverse range, culturally diverse range. So even though it was a small group of participants, I think it was very kind of rich and meaningful data and ideas that we were getting from them about what they found effective and meaningful. And they did say in their responses to Space Team, for example, that they loved the elements of working together. So we can see that these are kind of playing out in, in the group of children that we were talking to. So before we gave the children the headsets, or the families rather, the headsets, they had to do just a preliminary survey to tell us about their previous experiences of virtual reality, as well as generally about their kind of media and digital lives. And Marvel and Minecraft were absolutely favorites among them. But they were very diverse in their interests in, in literature, games, film, television, things like the Moons, fantasy books, obviously Harry Potter is a very popular one. But in fact, they didn't have a great deal of prior virtual reality experience. Some had experienced it in kind of museums or other kinds of non-school educational settings. One of them had a Google cardboard, sorry, yeah, a Google cardboard. And one had, through their, their parents' work at university, played with a headset before. But for many of them, this was very new and a very kind of exciting, different experience to what they had before.
To the next story, next story, next slide. I think for me, I really enjoyed the opportunity to work with proper researchers, proper researchers. Whereas the, the research that we Whereas the, the research that we conduct, the industrial level research that we conduct tends to be designed specifically to get a response in, in terms of a product that already exists. Whereas this, this research was a completely new approach for me. And I really appreciated it. And I feel like we as an organisation learned a lot from the university. And I kind of hope it went the other way. I don't know. I can't speak to that. What do you think, Anish?
Absolutely. And so for me, I literally just started my job at Sheffield. And to be included in a project like this was wonderful. So it was already a surreal experience starting during a pandemic and not being able to meet any of my colleagues face to face last year. But then for Becky to bring me in on the project and to gain this kind of experience of working with a tech company was, was so fascinating. And then later on in the project stages and during the master's programs that Becky and I were teaching on, still are teaching on, we included some master students in sort of smaller elements of the project. So they went through the whole research process of designing a project around a particular element of VR storytelling. So for example, one of them talked about avatar design and about risk-taking or rule-breaking in virtual reality spaces. And they approached me, Becky, Emma and our participants to generate their own data and around it. So it was an incredible experience for the students. And this is something that we'll be integrating into our program going forwards, connecting students to existing projects from researchers on the programme. So that's myself, Becky Parry, Dr Fiona Scott, Dr Jess Bradley. And as we're all already working on other projects around VR and AR. So hoping to include the students in these, give them that kind of real world research experience as well. So yeah, it was certainly an extremely meaningful experience from our end too.
Just to come full circle. What we found, what we discovered through the research were a number of things. One, children have the best way of explaining things. So one of the first sets of questions that the children were asked were, could, could you explain what virtual reality is? Do you, can you, in your own words, what is it? And one of my absolute favourite quotes from that is, it's a screen on your face. Which is incredibly accurate. And I think that they are such a savvy audience, really interested in how they understand and talk about their embodied experience of media through VR headset. So we found that they were, they were completely obsessed with the agency that they could get in those story worlds. A lot of the, the first steps and things that happened, they were like, oh, okay, I understand this. I have control in this space. This is, this is more than just being, playing a game on a flat screen. I can move around the space. I have full agency and embodiment. Yeah, I like how it feels and how you can interact with everything. And I think that, I know from being a child that was obsessed with computer games, I really wanted to interact with everything. I wanted to look in the drawers and open the covers. And I was always frustrated by the lack of interaction in the story worlds that I was exploring as a child in the, in the olden days. So yeah, that was, it's, that was the biggest takeaway is the embodiment. Do you want to talk a little bit about what you saw, Anish?
Yeah, I mean, really just to kind of, sorry, didn't mean to go to the next slide. Just to say more about this, yeah, just the, the children really loved how it felt to play like the sports games like Beat Saber. They love moving their bodies around with virtual reality. And one of them was a big fan of Alyxia, where you don't have the handsets, you just move your hands. And that maps onto the virtual world. So that feeling of her actual movements were affecting that space was something she really enjoyed. And so we, like I say, we surveyed them at the start. We had focus groups while they were playing with the headsets and other games. And then another kind of survey, following up on a few months of getting used to playing in virtual reality, asking about what they would like for the game design. And certainly, choice, freedom, agency, interactivity, these were the key things that, that they were looking for and said that they would enjoy. So following that, CI put forward a kind of prompt, an idea for what act one of the story might be and asked for their feedback on it. And the goal wasn't for them to write stories around this, just to see what their thoughts were about it. But their responses were very creative. They started immediately with kind of telling stories around this crack in the floor that appears on a very ordinary day. Emma, do you want to talk more about this stage of it?
Yeah, at this, at this stage, we were, we were trying to conceptualize how we could create some constraints, as I said before. And would they understand it? And what came back were five or six really brilliant ideas for what would happen next. So one of the children suggested that a cat was going to come out of the floor and the cat would have superpowers. And it, that, the story went on, like it wasn't just, it wasn't just something came out and it was, it was a bit boring. Like the story was detailed. There was a lot of information coming through. So we knew that we'd figured on something. Originally in my head, because I like alliteration and because I'm a little weird, it was going to be a crack and that came out of the crack. But after a lot of back and forth, we decided that that was going to be very scary and possibly not, not a good idea, given the audience. So we landed on the octopus. I'm not sure how or why, but we landed on an octopus. So ultimately what happens is, at the beginning of the story, an octopus leaps out of the chest. And the narrator asks you what you think you need to do about it. The octopus has some interactivity, so you can, there were some props. You can throw it a ball. It will catch and bounce the ball sometimes. You can throw it some hoops and you're also given a laser pointer. And it reacts to the laser pointer much like a cat does. And the, the point is, it's something for them to focus on so that they can construct stories around it. What we saw as a result of this is some of the children just got lost in playing. And they just got lost in playing with the octopus. They thought this was wonderful. One child was terrified by the octopus and I regret my decisions because I didn't want to make any child scared. And some of the children actually constructed narratives. So one of the girls called it Fred and was, created this whole narrative around, around the octopus, which was wonderful, because that's exactly what we wanted to see. It worked. About 20% of the audience understood what was trying to be achieved and, and actually created some stories. But actually, the rest of them just had a lot of fun. I think exploring, playing with the octopus and creating, creating a bit of comedy in the world. I don't know, have we got the video to show, Anish? Is that ready?
Welcome to Storyland. Sorry.
Hi, this is my pet Fred. Once upon a time, there was a lovely, a son whale came out and he was very, very bad. So he, hiya. Doesn't like it. Bye bye, he said. Bye bye. Bye. Bye bye.
Thank you, Anish. Emma, we have our time running out. Do you have any ending comments?
I think that's just about good with it. We're at the stage where we're looking for additional funding to carry on. Or I'm interested in working with partners that might want to work and collaborate with us on this. But yeah, that's it.
Yep.
Yeah, and we've just got a little bit of extra funding at Sheffield to talk about avatar design with CI. So looking forward to arranging some workshops around, around that with the National Video Game Museum and a local company and Reni, thinking about gender inclusion as well as other kinds of inclusive design. But yeah, thank you all very much and looking forward to any questions or reflections from the audience.
Thank you, lovely. For now, we don't have any questions from the audience. But Emma, could you tell what kind of collaboration are you looking for? Do you look for creative partners to help you out to paint those old worlds and 3D animations or?
Yeah, creative partners or story owners or brand owners. We're, we're also working on a project called Curators, which has cultural storytelling. So museums and galleries, which will be a place that will be a cross between storytelling and education. So yeah, we're always interested in talking to other partners. And we like to work collaboratively. It's built into the name of the business. Yeah.
And on what platform should we wait for that release? Or it's going to be only for UK?
If, as, as and when it will be on Oculus AtLab, we're also potentially going to release it on Steam. But it's, it's still very early in the year.
So thank you a lot, thank you a lot, sharing this, how so far you're doing a great job. And it's not the first project we're having today, a collaboration between academia, professors and practitioners. So thanks for your experience. It was super nice to have you here. Thank you for joining us this Saturday. And we move on to our next project. And I'm very happy to present to you our next speakers, our bunch of next figures coming all from Latvia and joining me here live in studio. So I will invite them one by one and shortly presenting who they are. So Raivis Simonsons is a co-founder of a creative museum, a Riga-based think tank focusing on museums and creative economies. He holds a PhD in museum studies from the University of Laitsester with specialization in contemporary history. In 2018, he joined Jeanne's Lipkem Memorial and award-winning memorial museum Nuga to work on development of its new civil education centre with the emphasis on digital programming. As a research fellow at the University of Latvia, he's interested in memorial museum and dark tourism. Our, another speaker is Liga Velena. Liga is a media artist, illustrator and graphic designer based in Riga, Latvia as well. She's working with the various digital media, data visualization, virtual reality, 3D art video. Liga studied new media art at Liepaj University and visual communication at Art Academy of Latvia from where she graduated with a master. Her professional awards include 2020 second place in women in tech, first hackathon in Riga and Delphi Campus Award in 2018, Riga goes VR, Magnificence Latvia Hackathon. And then we have Yava with us also, Viksna. Yava's a new media artist also coming from Riga. She holds Bachelor in New Media Art and History and is currently studying towards a master in VR and smart technologies in the University of Vidzemne, right? Experienced in VR and ER through different art-related projects. Yava is interested in topics connected to human experience, feminism, self-representation and mental health. And moreover, we have another speaker joining us online. I don't know if we have Corey McLloyd with us. Corey, are you here? Yes, I see you. Hi. Hello. So Corey is a creative technologist and interdisciplinary artist. Those who work span the performance arts, film, television, communications art, new media art. He studied theatre, film and television studies at the University of Cologne in Germany and holds a postgraduate diploma in African studies and a master in theatre and performance from the University of Cape Town in South Africa. His work has received national, international awards, has been featured in such publications as Fast Company and New York Times. He's currently a creative technologist at the Fallon Worldwide and has done work for clients such as Target, Boston Scientific, Saucuny and Erby's. And I have a huge description of what they're going to talk today. But I just give a floor for you and I hope you're going to tell us through how, how come you're here. I'm very happy to hear your Riga's first success story from the Hackathon. So very nice to see familiar faces here. And yeah, and the floor, and the floor is yours.
Thanks for a great job for reciting all these biographies. Well, can we play a clip first and then we go into?
Discussion.
Right, here we are. So it's good to be back in this very studio. Like two years ago, there was this hackathon at which we all participated, giving a challenge to the crowd of young developers. giving a challenge to the crowd of young developers, new media artists. And here we are to present you our work in progress two years later. So Kristina, thank you so much for the invite. We are happy to share some slides and talk you through what we did over the last two years. Okay? So long title short, by the end of the presentation, I hope this will become more clear. So we talk about a virtual reality experience, which is nonlinear story of radical social justice. And if I take this device, I can go ahead. So I guess Kristina's idea was to invite us as somebody who has an image and a working method as a support base for creative industries essentially. And those two examples I give you here is the children book by Ines Zandre and publishing house Leos and Mas, which served as an inspiration for the later full-length feature movie, The Mover, which looks at the story of Jeanne's Lipke, which is the towering figure among the rescuers of people during the Second World War. So the image you see on the left-hand side is the memorial museum, memorial museum dedicated to that person, Lipke, Jeanne's Lipke. So we have physical place essentially, right? So why digital technologies and why virtual reality? And I will tell you why. So this is a short chronology how things developed. So the Hackathon, the development of one year, then the presentation, the first iteration in 2020, so last year. So what was last year? Last year, at this very presentation, we announced the plans for developing an educational centre and what we call by now, digital maker space. Now, the last year, we worked already together with somebody in Minneapolis, US, a creative technologist of the Fallon Worldwide, Cory MacLeod, as our mentor towards the second iteration. But I'll give you some background, where we are heading towards. So welcome to Riga. We are located on the left bank side of the river Daljava, a small really place, but which is located in the area which in like five years will accommodate 30,000 students of three universities. Zooming closer, we see that we are just across the street of the big campus there. And we say both ingredients are there, hardware and software. Hardware is the accessibility and the software is students and the creative class and businesses growing and residential areas. So we thought it's a good idea to try to see ourselves within this larger context, which is called in urbanology, mile of knowledge. And we just found out that we are part of this mile of knowledge. And this mile of knowledge comprises universities, as I said, business centres, residential area and this small dot, black dot on the island of Tijpsla, which is the memorial. So we saw this plot of land next to the memorial vacant for sale and we took a calculated risk to fundraise for buying this plot of land, which we eventually did. And now we are working towards the completion of a blueprint of an educational centre, which will eventually become a civic education centre, you know, learning from the back history and maker space, a digital maker space. And so here we are again, back in 21. And I give over to my colleagues in the project to go into details of technology.
As already mentioned, we met at Riga AFF Goes VR Hackathon in 2019. And our team consisted of four media artists, Kasper Sleva, Laury Staub, Yeva Viksna and me. And in 24 hours, we created a prototype in response to the challenge given by the Lipke Memorial. We created a virtual reality experience of living room in Riga ghetto, which gave a chronological insight into what happened there over the first three months after its creation by Nazis in 1941. The task was to create a three-dimensional artistic linear experience about dramatic events when the 25,000 inmates of the Riga ghetto were killed into mass graves. What interests us as artists is to engage with our audience in the most powerful way. And through our work, we have found that virtual reality is a powerful platform for environmental storytelling and teaching through empathy. After the Hackathon, we were approached by the Lipke Memorial team with an offer to start working on a Lipke bunker VR prototype, an underground three by three meter space under the shed in the yard of Lipke's family house where the fugitive Jews found refuge. The main idea was to recreate Lipke bunker in a three-dimensional environment and make this interactive VR experience interesting to a youth audience. The aim was to find a way to teach history in a new, engaging way, through empathy, while looking at the bunker through one person's perspective. The first iteration of VR bunker was presented in November 2020 at a public event at Jeanne's Lipke Memorial, announcing at once the plans for the House of Courage, Educational Centre and Digital Maker Space. So this fall, Jeanne's Lipke Memorial, in cooperation with the University of Latvia Research Project MemoTours, was carrying out an empathy mapping research of the Lipke bunker VR. And empathy mapping is considered one of the user experience methodologies. The aim of research was to identify the experiences and attitudes of the target group, in our case, young people, 18 to 25-year-olds, and see how they feel about VR that they tested in specifically organized focus groups by social anthropologists Dian Popova and Elsabeth Grimblate. And the results showed that after interacting with the objects in VR and hearing personified stories about historical events and objects, the audience looked at real-life exhibition with greater interest. And the participants also said that VR experience was expected to be not so graphically rendered and even aesthetically pleasing. And since this is a work in progress, such an exercise could help in continuous design process. Importantly, the target audience suggested that the Lipke bunker VR experience should be integrated into the exhibition of the Jeanne's Lipke Memorial as the first thing when visiting the museum, as it gives the most immersive experience of the historical, physical and social context of life in bunker. And after having the VR experience, viewing the scenography of the exhibition and physical artefacts and showcases, it gives much more meaning to the visit of the memorial. Research demonstrates that VR technology is a powerful tool to engage youth in the learning process. Gamification, such as adding game mechanics to such educational experiences, speaks to young audiences. And we speak their predominantly visually immersive language. Another aspect is virtual reality's presence effect and its immersive nature. Through technological tools, we can recreate proportionally correct one-to-one scale environments and through three-dimensional soundscapes and lightings, we can intensify emotions. And so where are we now? In the first sprint of the project, we focused on developing the core story of the bunker space in Tijpsla as seen from Zigus, Jeanne's Lipke's son, perspective. The current development of the project augments the scope of perspective to include the stories of those people whom Lipke helped evade the Holocaust. So this augmentation of multiple perspectives and stories is intended to create a nonlinear, interactive experience, which captures the scale and the effect of the Lipke efforts during the Holocaust. We're currently developing the story of a family from Berlin, Hannah and Sophia Stern. The Sterns were deported from Berlin to Riga in 1942, January, and were able to escape from Kaiserwald concentration camp in one of Lipke's most challenging rescue operations. And to sum up, we're working with Cory MacLeod and Fallon Worldwide to take the project to a new level. For instance, we're using different, more complex artistic methods than in previous iterations. For example, the three-dimensional environment is combined with hand-drawn illustrations and we're using metaphors and symbols to create the experience more interesting and engaging. We're also deploying fieldwork as a method. This includes exploring historical Riga ghetto places, taking photos of historical buildings and mapping them onto the 3D objects and including them into the overall virtual reality experience. Our focus is to bring Jeanne's Lipke's story to life as an asynchronous VR experience that tells a nonlinear story of radical social justice. And now Cory.
Good morning. So my name's Cory MacLeod. I'm a creative technologist at Fallon in Minneapolis. Can you pull up the next slide, please? Yeah, so I just wanted to speak for a moment about why an ad agency, communication arts agency in Minneapolis and a creative technologist at that agency is partnering with a museum in Latvia. And one of the, probably the main reason for this is that in May 2020, here in Minneapolis, George Floyd was brutally murdered. And this is not something new to America, but this happened in our neighbourhood. This happened, you know, where we live, where we go to church, where we go to shop. And the inequities that have been decades in the making here in Minneapolis, some of those problems are particular to Minneapolis. Some of those problems are, we share with the rest of the nation here in America. Those became during the media and there was a public outpouring of sadness and outrage that we knew we had to address in the ways we knew possible through the communication arts and specifically in my case, how to use technology, how to employ technology in communication arts. Okay, next slide, please. In parallel to this public outrage, there was an emboldened white supremacist movement coming to Minneapolis with the express purpose of starting a race war. So a lot of the fires and were done by white supremacists coming to Minneapolis and with the express intent of starting a race war. And suddenly we find ourselves in the middle of this conflagration of conflicts and at risk ourselves. And we knew we had to do something about it. And then, next slide, please. And we saw in, but it's for us as artists and communication practitioners of communication arts, it's hard to talk about the subject when you're in that subject. But we saw in Jeanne's Lipke's story an opportunity to talk about the things we're dealing with right now, to talk about an example of radical social justice, about standing in the middle of the dialectic of oppression and taking a stand, like Jeanne's Lipke, like the people who stood at Cub Foods and tried to stop, tried to stop Derek Chauvin from murdering George Floyd. The same people who a year later, at their own risk, would take the stand at the trial of Derek Chauvin, which ended up in possibly the first successful conviction of a police officer in the United States and sparked a movement of radical social change. So, next slide. And just want to take another beat back about, you know, where Fallon and I specifically come from, from like VR and our experience with that. A few years ago, we made another VR project about a Latian rock band called Pathones, which we premiered at Viva Tech in Paris. And the experience we had there was, you know, we set up the virtual reality setup and we had a vibe set up. And then people would come through and they would do the experience. And it was chaotic and wonderful. But every time someone came, and this is something that no one in the audience knew much about Latian, no one in the audience definitely didn't know anything about this rock band. But when they came out of the experience, they wanted to talk. They wanted to have a conversation with whoever was standing there. They'd gone through this very immersive, emotional experience, high energy experience, and they wanted to talk about it in their own thoughts. And the interesting thing that came out of that is that they all related that experience they just had to what is happening right now. So the experience spoke a lot about authoritarianism and how rock music can be a voice of change and opposition to authoritarian regimes. And they were talking about what's happening right now. And we saw that there's a huge educational opportunity in VR to, when you combine VR with some sort of platform of dialogue or open up a space for dialogue. Combining those two is a huge... So what we did after that is we started to augment the virtual reality experience together with physical exhibitions and talks and, you know, bringing this to schools, to presentations in church basements. But obviously, as an ad agency in Minneapolis, we're limited in the scope of our educational knowledge, our presentational knowledge, spatial knowledge. And that's why we want to partner with someone who's, you know, got expertise in this area, which is precisely the Lipke Memorial in Riga. So, next slide. So now, we're, as Yeva and Liga mentioned, what we're doing is augmenting the story that Yeva and Lina and Lipke Memorial have already started building out. And that perspective of Zigus augmenting that with new perspectives and specifically the people Jeanne's Lipke helped rescue. And when you start looking at Lipke's story through the lens of the people he helped rescue, you realise that the act of wanting to be rescued is an act of heroism. It's an act of defiance. And that there's a radical social justice by saving yourself. And so this first story we're telling is the story of Hannah Steon, who was six and a half when she was deported to Riga from Berlin and came to the Riga ghetto. And she was about eight and a half when she escaped the Kaiserwald concentration camp with the help of Jeanne's Lipke. And the way we are putting this, put this story of Hannah together is that... So Hannah, after the Holocaust, never wanted to talk about it. She didn't talk about it to her family or her children. We approached her daughter, Ilana, who lives in Tel Aviv. And Ilana said, "All I have are these letters my grandmother wrote to German institutions seeking compensation." And these letters were written in German and we translated these letters. And from these fragments of letters, we were able to piece together Hannah's story. And we recorded that voiceover in Tel Aviv last week. And that's a picture of Ilana in the sound studio, reading her mother's story. And so when we go into the experience, the UX, it's like you go in, you have a choice of five stories you can choose from. In this case, it'll be Hannah's story. And you can experience that story as shared testimony. It's like passing down memories. So it's seeing it through that perspective, but more as a memory scape. Next slide, please. And the one thing that stuck out for us, that, you know, the one sort of thing I want to pull out from how we're telling the story is one of the words we latched on to from the letters is that... She says that, so Hannah's story was, her father was first, was the first to be arrested. She was arrested a half a year before Hannah was deported to the Riga ghetto. And the father was sent to Zachsenhausen and sent postcards from Zachsenhausen. So we took this idea of postcards, and next slide, please, and are using that as sort of, kind of a literary visual device to tell this story and take... tell this story and take us through this VR experience. So the experience, this is a screen cap from the beginning of the story where we hear the voiceover say, "My mother was born in Berlin. She lived on the Taranis das across the street from a park with a little twillo tree. We see this woolly tree." And then like a flock of birds emerging, and these birds turn out to be postcards. And these postcards start dropping into the scene, forming the city square of Berlin. So postcards from the dystopian world. Um and the floor is an animatable map of Berlin from the nineteen forties. Next slide please. And then these postcards become projection maps of hand drawn animations. This is a, you know, an animation of, on the left of the notice to for deportations. On the right is hand drawn animation of Hannah's mother, who went, she went to the Gestapo a few days before they were supposed to be for the Riga ghetto. And in the letters, the Gestapo official tells them, "Yes, your husband is scheduled to be um transferred to the Riga ghetto from Zachsenhausen. We'll meet you there." Which was a lie. Um, next slide please. And then these these postcards also become ways of us to incorporate archival photography together with three D environments. So this is like a little gif of, you imagine the the, if you can imagine, a postcard kind of of the interior barracks from um Kaiserwald coming at you. And that postcard dissolves and you're in the three D environment of um the the barracks and Kaiserwald. And next slide please. This is another where we kind of like asymmetrically recreate the perspective mapping of each photo of the archival photos. It's an archival photo of the Kaiserwald concentration camp taken from above. That then becomes like, kind of like a stage that comes at the viewer and then the viewer is transported into the barracks to show them its scene. So if I can, next slide please. So if I can augment um the the sort of thesis statement I have brought up from the beginning of our intent with this project is to create an asynchronous VR experience that tells a nonlinear story of radical social justice. We can augment that with employing future technology to reach into the past and open dialogue about the present, where we can reach into the past using technology, using things like perspective mapping, using like clone stamping to to pull out textures and bring them to life in a three D environment, as we did with those examples I showed you before, to talk about the things that matter right now, so we can make those connections between the past and the present and how those past events bring to life the lessons that are pertinent, things that are happening right now in our neighborhoods. Thank you. Next slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Lovely. Interesting. I just, may I ask questions? Yeah? Uh so could you clear this uh into more detail? So how come this fell worldwide? How Cory came on board in Trug? Who reached out? Who knew whom to reach out? It's American and Latvia. What kind of um yeah, collaborations and yeah. And I see one smiling person who's at fault for this probably.
Right. We we knew Cory from his previous work that he did in this area. He did some fabulous, fabulous animation for the Riga Ghetto Museum. And we knew that he's interested and he's uh American and Latin descent partly. Um and um the content is just as much important as the method in this respect. So we are here, as I said, we started literally in this area from something very, very small, then collaborating a larger team and then reaching out to a mentor who could possibly do it on a pro bono basis, because there's no other chance as we would be able to do this. So and and this really happened and we are happy about that. And now this phase is 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 close to completion, the second iteration, uh which then we will use as a proof of the concept piece object to pitch it to the uh industry um experts and memorial museums worldwide and see how it goes further. So Cory's role is really, really tremendous here in 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 teaching us how to go ahead.
Wonderful. Any other comments from you, from your side? How how you feel? You had such a long trip and it elevated so much. How the team, the creative team feels about this project and where it went, where it brought you?
I think we all are very proud of where we are. And we definitely didn't expect that we're gonna go this far and see our idea transformed so many times and to see somebody else also being interested in the idea and willing to put their time and expertise. Um it's it's amazing. And also what is wonderful that Cory is attracting also people uh from all over the world. So we get to collaborate with interesting people and uh he has people, for example, yeah, Recording Voice in Tel Aviv and things like that uh that we probably wouldn't be able to do without him. So it's it's actually, yeah, amazing to have this project and see it kind of go this full route from this beginning hackathon, twenty four hours, to working uh really almost full time on a project and and also seeing the traction around it, that people are interested in. I think especially for me, it was uh very important to see the feedback from the from the test groups. Because that's kind of the main reason, you know, we're doing it uh for for the audience. And when you actually see the results and they enjoy it and that it helps to uh see the exhibitions and museum as in a different light, kind of in in a more personal way. I think that's kind of the greatest feeling.
Congratulations on this expanding to international team. I have one more question for Rivas. Like you, after this test screening, that when the audience say, "Oh my God, it should be the first experience." Like how are you as a museum reactive? Do you know where you're evolving? And are you still open for those all kind of suggestions, which comes actually from your audience?
Absolutely. And that's why we invited the social anthropologists from university to conduct a proper research with focus groups. So we're taking them seriously. And more of that uh within our core team, I must say, we have ambassadors of the future, House of Courage, youngsters, eighty to twenty years old, and they're helping us on each step. So, congrats on everyone.
Wonderful. It's amazing. Uh we could keep you on asking. So I'm looking forward visiting your museum, actually, and seeing all the developments and you successfully continuing your production. Thank you Cory for joining us, uh for joining the team. It's been wonderful. So I just wish you success. And thank you for coming and openly sharing all the process and you went through amazing work.
Thank you for the invite.
Yeah, lovely. And yeah, for the audience, we go into the small pause to change the setting because we're moving to our next speaker, who's also here, present, uh coming from France. So we'll be back in two minutes. So very welcome back to the studio and with a new setting. And before we start with our next speaker, I just want to address that uh Jeanne Lipka's experience, Lipka Burner VR Documentary, is also possible to see in the festival, in Splend Palace and in the museum itself. So those who live in Latvia, Riga, welcome to try it out. And voila, uh we're moving to our next and last speaker for this case study session. We, and I am very thrilled to present you Jean Marchalot, uh coming from France Television. And uh it's very nice that this morning we had really people, creators mostly, creators, collaborators, academia. And here we have a broadcaster and distributor. Um and I'm looking forward for your presentation. Before we start, I briefly represent you uh our next speaker's background, uh which is very rich. Um Jean has uh over twenty three years' experience in production and post-production, mostly on TV series and dramas in Paris, in Paris, France. She also has studied the TV series, drama and feature narrative language, created professional trainings on TV series, writing and showrunning, and taught the economy of digital and mass media at the University of Paris. She joined France Television in two thousand and eighteen to create the VX Fix post-production studio on the soap Chronicles of the Sun. Since the first of July of the twenty twenty, she is in charge of the storytelling research related to the new XR technologies at the France Television Innovation and Prospective Department. So France TV Story Lab is a co-produce, uh co-producing documentaries and fictions in AR, VR, mobile devices and Quest. So Jean, very nice to see you here live with us. Pleasure. The floor and microphone is yours.
Yes, thank you very much Eva. And thank you for the festival to receive me today, which is nice to be, you know, full real, not online. Um so yes, I'm gonna talk to you about um VR and XR and um and about issues regarding XR storytelling uh through all the um projects that France Television is co-producing, actually. And um it's quite new for France Television to have a department which is uh um aim is to co-produce XR experiences and with, to catch, in order to catch um a wider and a younger audience um with new digital contents. So it's a real big and new challenge for France Television as a um classic broadcaster um to co-produce such experiences for users and to explore new immersive experiences. Um because uh we know that that young people are not attracted anymore by TV. Um so we have to think about contents that go um think um thought for them, made for them and on mobile devices and also on meds. So it's really um a necessity to explore new storytelling and new media. And um VR and AR are the only way really to be absolutely um immersed in a story and be part of it. Um so the story app is the department, as you said, in France Television that is co-producing AR, VR and XR free app available, um sorry, about films and documentaries. Um and also we are co-producing VR for Quest. Um so our aim um is to cover stories that matter and with not new technology and with great subject and topics such as women, environment, handicap. And uh our aim is really to question our society and our world nowadays. So my goal is also to challenge the storytelling and to experiment the present and the future with immersive experiences and stories. Uh we work with producers in France, directors and authors who, sometimes they are really known at the international level. So because there are, France is the second country in the world producing VR just after the United States and before Canada. So we are really um, uh it's really a new um branch in France and uh and new opportunities as well. And um I'm really glad that now France Television uh is coming on this um VR experiences and to to show our um our really great talents in France. And just for the information, the only two uh public broadcasters that are co-producing XR in France, it's Arte and France Television. So um how did that work? I mean, how do I work with producers? So there there are two uh steps. First, the development and the ARD of the project, and then the production of the product. Actually, I've got three projects on production. Uh sorry, six projects on production.
Right now?
Yeah, just right now, yeah. Um and two of them have um have already been available now for uh all the public as a LBI, the location based experience, or on store. So our VR um LBI uh is a documentary game about Les Disappiances and is directed by Camille Du Valerois. We have also Seven Gramps, which is a an AR documentary available on stores um for um mobiles. And uh we we had uh um we won la- uh last night, sorry, last night at the Prix Europa, the special commendation uh for the best European online medium project. So we, that's that's very nice.
Congratulations.
Um and also have two others, uh AR project for kids called La Petite Danseuse, The Little Dancer, and Biblio Kate. And they're for two, twenty twenty two. I've already got two projects that be, that are on production. One is a six, a three sixty film for Quest, made uh directed by Jan Kunnen, who is quite famous in France. Um and written by Charlotte and Sabrina. Sorry. Sabrina Cavot. And and also, which is will be a very highlight uh project next year, it's Fight Back. It's a video game about self-defense for women. So the aim of this video game is to teach women how to fight. Um and it's made, it's directed by Céline Tricard, who made The Key. Um and it's, I'm very glad that she's working on the project that France Television is co-producing, actually. Um so all the pro, those projects, um it's are made also to reach a wider and a younger audience because younger adults and young ones uh do not watch TV anymore. And so the question is how to create content for them? How how can a broadcaster such as France Television can can really um give the opportunity to the young ones to be, to have contents that really talk to them? And so for that, the those digital content must be not only our broadcasting and they must be on devices they use. So they're really um, it's our mission as a public broadcaster als- also to to have um AR films uh on smartphones, because that's for everybody. When we have a documentary, art fiction um in on stores, that mean that everybody can upload it, can see it, can do, can experience it. And from home, you don't have to go somewhere. So it's very important because that's really for everybody. Um I'm gonna speak about a bit more about two two projects. I mean, well, uh more than two projects, but but they played at how we met them. What was the process? So we'll first to talk about Les Disappiances, uh which is quite um a a global project because we we have um different contents for different targets with this project and different um people working on. Um so it's about prehistoric woman. Um what Les Disappiances takes takes the user back uh three, uh I'm sorry, uh thirty eight thousand years ago. So when you put the ads, the ads at hand, you you are the prehistoric period. And you discover the true uh face and true life of women at that time. She was an artist, an artist, and a clan leader. And she'll, so now she tells a different um story of mankind, in fact. And this is a multifaceted um project in collaboration between Little Big Story and France Television and produced uh also with Ubisoft, the French uh um uh video game editor. And we are using for uh Les Disappiances vivid images from Far Cry Primal. And it's really new um to, because there's also uh And it's really new um to, because there's also uh a documentary for on that topic, on Lady Sapiens, that was on, on French TV. And it's also a V R interactive experience. And it's also a three sixty films. And it's also uh seven short films for kids that are on um a p- uh educational uh platform. So that's really important as well to have this kind of global project and this kind of unique collaboration between a producer, a broadcaster and Ubisoft. And it's um a real big V R adventure that will be available on Museum in France, in Paris. And I suppose all over the world because it's really unique. Um I've, um there's somebody's uh working in the Z D F, just has got the same job that I have. And we talked about Lady Sapiens, I thought it was just great, a very great idea. And the thing is that we, in the V R experience, the user is Lady Sapiens. So the impact of uh really uh think about what she was at that those times is really more powerful. And I'm really proud of of uh being part of this project. Well, in fact, I'm really proud, being proud of all the project I have because I'm trying to be, you know, to to have a proposal that that can impact a lot of people and different people and also the young guests. So that's really, really great. Um and also, we, so we have Seven Grams. So as I said, we we had the special commendation for best European online media project yesterday. Yesterday night with the Prix Europa, and that's really, really great. So Seven Grams is a documentary on A R um about the minerals in our smartphone and and how um these, those minerals are um are uh, sorry. Sometimes I'm losing my English. Um how those resources are uh exploited in in Congo. So that's really the dark side of this explo- exploitation um in that, in that particular um country. And the Seven Grand is um that I was, been written and directed by Karim, Karim Ben Kerifa, who made also The The Enemy. And it's really um we we tested the app on young people, you know, they're about sixteen, seventeen. And um they were really happy because for once they have a content that goes toward them on the mobile and that they use technologies that they know. Uh because of course, every teenager can uh know what a lenses, what a lenses is, what A R is, because they're all using Snapchat. So and so that make them concerned about the topic and the issue. And um I could see how they were, yes, happy about it, you know, um so and that's that's the way to make them concern about um this issue about minerals that we use for our smartphones and to, for them to apprehend the cost of it, the human cost of it. Because in the app, there's um an animated animated short film that tells the tor- the story of chance that was, is a young man that was um a kid that was working on as a miner, as as a soldier as well, child soldier. So we, that Seven Grams is really what we want to do in France Television as well is use new technology uh to create content and and to have a real uh big message on it. So the, that's why it's important for us to explore those new technologies. And, you know, with Seven Grams, we want to um really get the y- the the young guys, the teenagers concerned by um how um how to use a smartphone and 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 how to um have a more uh concern uh c- uh consumer uh about uh um about all this, in fact. So um so and about the production and phones and other designs. Uh and it's really important to use a smartphone to just tell all of this. Um so that's an important project. Um so while we we are using A R and V R, it's also to, so to impact more, to have um more concerned subjects and issues. And it's also to learn by gaming. Um so that's why I have um a project called When She Gets Out. It's about the little dancer of uh De Ga. And um it's a fantastic journey through artworks displays at the Museum of Orsay in Paris. Uh it's written by Gordon and Marie Selier. And uh so Marie, the little dancer, um she wants to to bring life uh her frozen um scalded uh prince. So she will go from painting to painting and try to find ingredients for a magic potion that will uh that she will give to her frozen prince. Make sure that it will move out of his statue. So it's for kids um about sixty uh of six, eight, sorry. And it's um, it's a A R story. And we will present it at the Musee d'Orsay, um mid-summer. And afterwards, it'll be on stores um at that time. And it's really um an invitation to to our journey for children and to make them uh aware of dance, music, uh arts and um and some very masterpieces that are well-known at the Musee d'Orsay and maybe to bring them afterward at the museum for them to see all those masterpieces. Well, that would be great. Um and I, and I will have um another uh project for children before Christmas. Um it's an invitation to read books. So that's really important as well. You, it's an app, an A R app, and it's a journey um that you, the 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 children would be able to do. Uh to, or at home, or I in libraries, to discover the universe of a French uh writer for children's book. So it's like a quest that they have to to spread out ingredients to, well, um at the end, uh win and the quest. So um it's really exciting because we really wanted to, with this project to to make them aware our important uh stories, books are. And it's uh, so it's Biblio Cat, and it's written by Gordon and Andres Hak. And I'm really looking forward to it. And we are, our first French writer is Timothée de Fontbel. And um we will present this project at um a festival of uh children literature beginning of of December in Paris. And uh and also because um uh libraries are um less, less children goes, go just nowadays in libraries because of their as um of the past, you know, the COVID past, they don't have it. So it's a way to bring library into uh their home. So uh and hopefully they will um buy books for Christmas. Or they will buy the books that um Timothée Fontbel is speaking about that give um, that gave him inspiration when he was a kid and now as a writer. Um I will also have, so as I said in the introduction, Fight Back will be um a main project next year. So Fight Back is a video game, a V R video game developed for Ocarus Quest Two. Um and it's um a long-driven initiation to learn gestures for self-defense. And it's direct, written and directed by Céline Tricard. She also directed The Key, that had many, many prizes all over the world. So over the cover of the training, it's a fun adventure game and with hand tracking. Um uh for, to have um combat mechanics is um a bit like um oh gosh, I'm gonna wait, um uh Beat Saber. Yeah, it's the same mechanical uh process in in the video game. And so it's um introduction to self-defense techniques for women. I've tested it and it's gonna be really, really fantastic and wonderful. So you can see your hands and they are lighter and you and you can get power. Uh if you put your hands in cycles, you you have really magic power. And that's, you know, you feel like Wonder Woman. It's just so exciting. Um so we used the um uh potential of V R as a tool uh for learning and develop- and developing, sorry, uh muscle story memory. And what uh to make um women conscious about what they can do with their body. And then they can say no to any violence they can have in their life. So it's to fight about abuse and discrimination and to, you know, to engage also women to make sure that they can have the the right gesture and the self-defense techniques to do that. Um so that, the 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 point of of Fight Back is to reveal superpowers. Um so that's really very great, in fact. Because you feel like, you know, for once you you're just a hero. Um and so they are, and difficulty increasing. So you have to be more and more physically engaged in the video game. And also, we discover untold stories because we know that nowadays, finally, women were really important during history, like Lady Sapiens. Lady Sapiens had a very active part in Sapiens Society, which we we discover now because um that was not what we were told at school. But in the video game, we will be able also to meet women that had his uh um very brave uh history um during that journey. So we will be able to know, to meet sisters that matter in history, but we have, that we have forgotten. And also it's an initiation, as I said, to self-defense. And with an accessible gameplay and a universal storyline, Fight Back can appeal to beginners and also gamers. So that's really important. And um um that be on um maybe, uh probably next spring. And um I'm sure that's gonna be really, a really important project. And I'm really happy to be on it as well. Um and also just to s- to speak a little about the project, which is still in development, but it's it's uh Empereur and it's already known because um known, sorry, because it uh the, this project won the prize of the best pitch uh last uh festival in Annecy last June. And it's about handicap. It's about um a a y- uh a young woman that's trying to to um create uh a contact and talk, talking with a father that I am who has lost and and the the way um how speaking um with a brain attack. And it's really pretty and it's really important. And it talks about handicap. And what is important is that the user will be instead of the father and will um be able to understand how difficult it is um when you have such a handicap. But also I hope can be positive as well. So that be um, it's a project for, it's a V R animated project for Quest as well. Um so all those projects can um tell a bit uh ingredient about uh new storytelling and how it looks like and what is it. Um and when I choose a project for France Television, it's always the story and the story and the story first that guide me in my choices because this, the basic of the story doesn't change. It's always the same. Um and we are rev- reventing storytelling in a way um and in with the new technologies. But it's always the same. You have um a beginning and then a lot of conflicts and then an end. And that's always, it works since the beginning of our world, the open, beginning of humankind, actually. Um what's is different is like new technologies, special, especially with um mobile device brings, bring contents at home and for everybody. Um and offer an interactivity for the user and for the first time. So the impact is greater and your exi- uh your experiences are more powerful. And it's um a way to um to to give the user the opportunity to realize um much more how important is self-defense, how important is a woman during at uh as a Sapiens society, in Sapiens society to to understand more about minerals in our smartphone, et cetera, chasera. So that's, we, we are um giving, innovating and immersive direction in those stories. And um it's a way to embark a young agents, to to speak to them and to go toward them and with those contents, even if it's a documentary. So I was really surprised and happy about the reaction of teenagers that tasted Seven Grams because that show really that we are in the right direction, that I the thing we, the way we are thinking all those project and we are creating is the good way to do it. So um and we are at France Television in that way, giving new entertainment entertainment to our users, to a wider audience. And we are offering TV program, you know, in um, in an expanded u- universe in an expanded label of France Television. Um so the, and the France TV Story Lab project show the diversity of issues, talent and storytelling and the quality of new technologies because now we can propose high-quality uh contents level. And the storytelling impacts more because the user is part of the experience because the user lives the experience um is instead of Lady Sapiens handicap, um s- um a man that cannot speak or a woman experiencing self-defense and so. And nothing else can um give that the um to the user and and also the other can be part of the creation of the story during the V R if there is interactivity. So that's what's really new and that's what we are exploring at France Television. And um was it great, the the price yesterday night at the Prix Europa is great. Because um I was saying just afterward, um just before this keynote that I'm very happy because each time we have a project that's going out on stores, we have a price. So it's really um, that's, that's the way we think also and that we are in the right direction. So it's really um, that's, that's the way we think also, and that we are in the right direction.
Thank you, lovely.
Thank you.
It's super interesting, I have many questions, but I'm happy that we have you in the next panel, so we can address that probably with other speakers. So maybe just one question, because it's all, it's amazing, of course, that the television is seeing this as uh why everything should be broadcasted, and you're going through many different audiences, using different mediums, museums, libraries, all these apps and games, joining partners. But my, my, my question maybe would be about the, the very beginning. Um how you commission, do you launch a call or um, I don't know, how you, uh how you collect those ideas, or how do you select? Can producers uh reach out to you anytime, or there is specific time when you open to, to get new products on board? And uh, and how about, and it feels like you have a lot of control then about uh how you want to develop, because there's um uh Lady Sapiens example, there's a lot of parallel um productions happening, like you, and then your colleagues on television can broadcast the, the animation or, or repeat the documentary, et cetera, et cetera.
Um I, I'll, I, there's two answers in fact, because you're in, in your question. Uh first of all, for um the project, how um, how the project come to me? Uh I would, do the projects come to me, sorry. Um uh well, there are several ways. Um a producer can um send me a project. Um I can um um have a, like a um call, like saying I'm looking project on about the environment, for example. But yeah, we're on a specific topic. Um that happened just before I had uh this job, so last July, uh July last year. Um so I have two projects about environment, because that was the topic. And I've got one about um uh the problem of water in twenty thirty-eight. So it's this topic. Um and also, I can also um spot a talent I want to work with. And initiate, well, not initiate project, initiate relationship that I want, I want to work on a project with, you know, um a talent that I really think um France Television would definitely have to co-produce one of the project. Because it's important to keep our talents and to, and to immerse them to um to the audience. So that's really the, the three ways of doing, of having um project. Um and, sorry, I forgot the second, the second, second part of the question.
We're running ti- a bit of time.
Okay.
So I think we can really leave it, all my questions for our next panel.
Okay.
The next panel will be much broader, talking about distribution a lot and development and how, how production gets financed. So I think you will have your part to share, how you do that.
Yes.
So yeah, voila, uh we don't have more questions from the audience.
Okay.
And thank you for your uh very interesting projects you're working on. And yeah, see you in the next panel in a couple of like half hour or less. And I would like to invite Christina to join me, and uh we would close the, this case studies session. I really want to thank all the presenters we had today. And uh another statement um addressing, it feels like after each presentation, is that we have those three case studies, so which were presented today. It's the Hush, Ilios, and the Latvian project Lipke Bunker, a VR documentary. So these projects are available to be watched on the headsets provided by the Vidzemnes University, which we are very thankful for, uh here in Riga Film Festival, in Splendid Palace, Elizabeth Street. So please come today and tomorrow from six o'clock and try it out yourself and get the, the experience of what people were talking and trying to explain for you yourself. And uh these videos will stay on the festival's YouTube channel, so you can always re-watch it and share it later with your friends. And voila, if I have something more to say, Christina would uh come and join me? Or not? Uh Christina, will you join me?
Um thank you, Eva. Uh uh thank you, our wonderful speakers. Uh thank you for being here, for coming here from near and far, and for honoring us with your uh presence via Zoom as well. This is really much appreciated. Uh thanks to our audience, our viewers. And I would like to say that uh these uh keynotes that you just heard will be available on Riga International Film Festival's website. Uh no, not website, but Facebook and YouTube accounts. So feel free to look them up and uh watch them um as you please. And um thanks to Eva, our amazing moderator, who has been going on non-stop for four hours. Um and also thanks to our partners, uh without whom none of this would be possible. Uh our main supporter, the National Film Center of Latvia, uh the French Institute in Latvia, uh and also the British Embassy in Latvia. And also, I would like to uh add a special shout-out and uh thanks to Vidzem Sauk School, who actually have a wonderful master's program in uh VR and AR. And uh thanks to them, actually, we were able to add this um uh side section, if you please, where we can provide you with a couple of our uh VR experiences here, experienceable in Splendid Palace. Uh Vidzem Sauk School has kindly lent us their headsets. And also thanks to uh Janas Lipke Memorial, who also provided their gear for um viewers be uh, being able to come here to Splendid Palace. And also, uh after we are uh done with the festival, you can still see the Janas Lipke Memorial experience uh in Riga and Jypsela at the memorial. So everything continues. And we will be back in about half an hour, after a short break, well deserved, um for uh, for the panel. And at the panel, we will have Jean-Michelot from France Televisions, uh Rasa Schmitte from Rikt Gallery in Latvia, and Eva Ilza-Jankowska from Embrace X Art Event in Finland. So thank you for watching, and hopefully see you soon.